Oh, there you go.
There it is six P M. Okay, it is six P M. Are we on? Yeah, we're on. Okay, it is six P M. And we are starting opening the when is it? The Tuesday, December fifth, twenty twenty three, six o'clock work session for the City of Carlton City Council. Can you call the role, please?
Mayor Linda Watkins.
Here.
Council President Shirley Wortmullin.
Here.
Counselor Kevin Skipper.
Here.
Counselor Gera May Brando.
Here.
Counselor Green Erickson. Here later. Counselor Carolyn Thompson Riser.
Yeah.
And Counselor David Samuel Hill.
Here on Zoom.
All council, well, with the exception of Counselor Erickson, all counselors are present in the county.
Thank you. Um, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the work session agenda.
Alrighty, in that case, I am going to turn that over to you, the work session.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I would like to turn it over to Elizabeth Decker and Steve Faust to facilitate this portion of reviewing draft code divisions one and two. Steve and Elizabeth.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Elizabeth will be doing the majority of the presenting tonight, but I just thought I'd let everyone know that I'm going to try to keep us on track to make sure we get through all of our items in a timely fashion. So I may pipe up every now and again, just to remind us of our of our time. But looking forward to a to a robust conversation tonight. Elizabeth?
Great. Thanks, Steve. And thank you, Shannon, Mayor, members of the council, and everyone else joining us this evening. Appreciate your engagement as we're getting into some of the real specifics of the code. It wouldn't be a work session without a presentation, so let me get that up and started for you all here. So I want to start with a give you a little bit of overview of the approach, and then we're going to dive right into some questions we've already gotten about flood planes. And we have our expert here, Gordon Monroe, and he's gonna jump in right at the beginning to to give us some more technical detail on that. So you can see that's part of our agenda tonight, but we also have a variety of other house code topics, many of which have to do with the residential zones. And we've got plenty of time for discussion and questions. So just to give you a reminder of our approach, right, the development code, you're seeing a third of it tonight, and that's a lot of pages in your packets. So we're trying to take a methodical sort of approach pace ourselves as we go through. So just to refresh your memories, we had a public open house on some of these concepts, talked through, gave an overview with you all in November. We're back now in December to talk about the first two divisions that constitute a number of chapters, some of the administrative and definitions in division one and then division two. I promise is the single longest division. So we're getting through the the biggest one tonight, or at least beginning to, and that talks about the standards for the individual zoning districts. And then we will continue working through the divisions in January and February before moving to some final draft and then an adoption process. So that's where we are in time and space. So as we get into the bulk of our meeting here to talk about this code review, first of all, you should have a copy of the zoning map in your packets, but we will be talking about different zonings or different zoning districts. And so, you know, just keep this handy for reference so that you can, if it helps you to think geographically where these zones are as we start talking about them. But the city did just complete an updated zoning map, so we've got that great resource available. And then to give you a reminder of the code structure, again, we're working on divisions one and two. And so there are pieces that we'll discuss tonight that relate to division two, particularly some of the pieces around zoning, things like cottage cluster standards, some subdivision standards around variety of housing. And I'm teeing up those questions because they will come back to you in more specific standards in division three and four. But since they're related to some of the issues that come up in division two, you'll be seeing them. But just, you know, if you feel like there might be some parts that aren't as detailed in this packet of code as you would like to see, there are five more divisions that we will look at. So hopefully, we will get to those details, and I'm happy to to share with you if you have questions about, is this going to be covered? Is this not covered? But we thought we'd start with just a few rather than all seven tonight. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Gordon to talk through one of the first more detailed concepts that come forward in this proposed code update that has to do with the flood plain management zone.
So first off, can you all hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Cool. Okay, so actually, the flood management section of the ordinance, we did not change very much. So I'll just go over quickly what we did do. There's an update of terms. We call the what used to be called the flood plain, or what people would call the hundred year flood plain, is now being called the area of special flood hazard. And that matches the firm maps. So that's just actually an editorial, it actually matches the definitions that were already in the code. So it's it was just making the rest of the section match. So no real change. It's just nomenclature. So we did add some language about no net cut fill within the flood hazard area. So when we say flood hazard, think of hundred year flood plain, which is what's shown on the firm maps. And this really brings the code up to where most codes are. So what no net cut fill means essentially is you cannot change the volume of the flood area. So when you think about that hundred year flood, just think about the ground and for just simplicity, say that there's two feet of water in the hundred year flood that's over that ground. Now, if you go in with some development and fill that in so that now in some places there's zero depth, you've essentially taken up volume in the flood plain, and potentially you're now flooding different areas, or the the actual flood elevation might rise. So we don't want either of those things. So when we say no net cut fill, that means that if you do fill in the flood plain, you've got to do enough cut so that those two equal each other, and they balance out. So the volume of water that can be carried in the flood plain doesn't change. So that that's what the no net cut fill means. We also added some language about the flow path. So it's conceivable that somebody could say I'm gonna do a whole bunch of fill, and then I'll cut way off in some other area, and you make this essentially pond, and you kind of block the flow. And so we added the language that the flow path has to be uninterrupted, meaning you can't substantially change the flow path if you're doing any cut and fill within the flood plain. So again, the intent is you don't change the areas that will be impacted by the flood, and you don't strand areas. So the water can still move. New language about the hundred year flood elevation, we're saying, hey, we don't want that impacted. So if you do cut and fill, that flood elevation should stay the same as it is right now. So again, that's that's avoiding impacting places that aren't flooded in that hundred year flood plane. That's generally how the code was used, but we didn't specifically say it. So the other part that we put in there and edit is prohibiting construction in the floodway. So when you think about the floodway, think about a channel of a river. That's the floodway. That's essentially where you're going to have all the current and most of the water. And the code, the way it was written said, ah, you can build there if you get a engineer that will put a stamp on it and say, yeah, we can build in the floodway. Well, we just don't want anything in the floodway. We don't want to impact that flow at all. So we just took that language out and said, no, you can't build in the floodway. Now, Elizabeth brought up that the state has some new floodway ordinances. It's about a forty six page document. And that long term, we could consider reviewing that document to see what other changes might be needed. A cursory review of it shows that a lot of the language in the Carlton ordinances were taken from that originally, and so were copacetic with the state ordinances originally. There might be some updates needed in the future. So that that really is the the main changes that we made to the flood plain management overlay. One other thing, it we made the permitting a little bit clearer. It said you had to have a permit. And it referenced a permit document that the city doesn't have that. So we just said, here are the items that have to be covered in the permit. Submit these items. So there's there's no specific form, but there is a requirement for the information to be submitted. This is just a picture of a firm map. And the areas that are in depending on whether you're colorblind or not, the sort of green color, it's labeled Zone A and Zone A E. That's essentially the special flood hazard area, otherwise known as the hundred year flood plain. So those are the areas that your flood ordinance refer to. And that's that's really all I wanted to say about this this firm map, and that's you can't just change this just as an editorial. You can't say, well, I know it floods over here. Let's change the map. This is something that's done nationally and is published. You can change it, but you have to do a whole bunch of study. And send that off to FEMA to see if they'll accept the information that you send. So this is just something we deal with. This is the hundred year flood plain. So are there any specific questions?
I'm just acknowledging. Hi, Gordon. I have a couple of questions. First, on this firm map here, when I'm looking at the areas in green, there's different color shades of that green from lighter to darker. Does that suggest that the darker is a more extreme flood area, or what does that mean?
That just means that there's something in the background underneath it, changing the color.
Oh, so.
Yeah. That's just the visual thing.
Okay, okay. And then on your chart, I can't see if this map is there. We go back yourself. Go back, or does he go back? Okay. On two, three, and four, those no net cut fill on the flow path and the and then the fifth one prohibit construction in the floodway channel. Have any of those things happened in recent development within like the last five years or ten years?
Nobody has actually asked to build in the floodway. There are legacy structures that are in the floodway that, you know, would have been done before ten years ago that if somebody asked to do them now, we would say no. They, let's see, no net cut fill. I think we've had that in a few places. If I remember correctly, we had to address that in J R one. They didn't actually end up affecting the special flood hazard area, but we certainly were talking with them about the no net, no net cut fill, and that they'd have to do that. And they just did it because they're used to doing it in in every other jurisdiction that they work in. But it didn't specifically say it in our code. So we were kind of hey, please do this. Yeah, and they knew it was actually the what you're supposed to do, so they worked with us. And it was the same issue with the uninterrupted flow. Now, interestingly, on our wastewater treatment plant project where we had to get land use permits with the county, they actually required us to do a study to show that we didn't impact the flood elevation. So it it's a no rise study. So the county just required that. We we are saying, we're not going to do any cut and fell. We're not gonna interrupt the flow path, so that guarantees us essentially that we're not impacting the flood elevation. But we're we're gonna say it anyway.
Great. Any other questions from in the room? And any online? Okay, it's a little hard for me to see the room, so please speak up when there are, but it sounds like we're ready to maybe move on to the next topic. Thanks so much, Gordon.
Okay, see you guys later.
Okay.
I'll sign off now.
Yes, thanks, Gordon, for that technical expertise. Yeah, again, map just for for reference, so we know what areas we're talking about. Talked through those questions. And so then we get into some of the bulk of the other code issues to talk about tonight. And the way I've structured our presentation really mirrors the memo that you received in advance. So I thought that I'd talk that we could talk through the four key topics raised there, and then some of the details from the code update table was how I was hoping we could walk through this, and Steve's just gonna help us keep an eye on time, make sure everyone's getting a chance to participate, but also that we have time for for all of our topics. So first of these more detailed topics that I wanted to talk a start with is permitting a variety of housing types. So one of the the key accomplishments of these code updates is allowing a greater variety of housing, as we've talked about. So that's primarily looking at these accessory dwelling units as a new use, duplexes in more places, and cottage clusters as a new use. And we've talked a lot about sort of this balance between permitting uses versus requiring a variety of uses, and how permitting these uses is one step towards getting a variety of them to help meet the diverse housing needs in Carlton. But that there might be some interest in, you know, further requirements to really ensure that we see or that you see in future developments, a mix of these different uses in new neighborhoods. And so that's an interesting balance to consider. And so I thought I'd, you know, highlight a few issues that relate to that. So first of all, you know, along the vein of permitting, several other pieces of the code are really encouraging this variety of housing types by creating these clear and objective standards that allow more housing types outright, allow them at greater intensities, so more housing units than comparable, single family detached. And together, those can be pretty compelling standards to help create more of this variety of housing. Within the residential zones, the mixed density residential zone, the MX zone, actually does have an explicit requirement to mix housing types on a given development site. And so right there, in that particular zone, there is an explicit standard that at least twenty five percent of the homes have to be a different type. So there have to be at least two different types of homes. Could be single family detached and townhouses. It could be duplexes and cottage clusters. It could be multifamily and single family at this point. So all of those are are different ways to combine, but that mix has to be met. And so what I'm curious about is to get your feedback on is as we head into additional standards, I'm curious if there are other tools or approaches that you're interested in to really require that variety of housing. You know, do you support this more permissive approach that that allows this greater variety of housing, but doesn't necessarily require them? Or would you like to see further requirements? So, you know, a couple that came to mind were expanding where the MX zone is applied for new development, and that could be done through through a separate zoning map update, which would apply that mix of housing requirements to more new developments. Or we could also look at, you know, a similar requirement for housing variety. You know, whether it's twenty five percent or a different standard that would apply to any new subdivision in any residential zone. And so, you know, in terms of our sort of background and recommendation, we certainly support this broader intent and this interest that we're hearing from council about, you know, getting a variety of housing. But just some concern that the more requirements that get, you know, added to individual developments, you know, adding something like that for new subdivisions could have a chilling effect on development. It's really hard to say at this point. It does add complexity to a new development that some developers may be willing to take on, and and others might not, which there's could be what you're hoping for, or could be a concern if you're looking to to stimulate more new development. And this is another thought, too, is that with all these new housing types coming online, like that is already a significant change. And so maybe giving that a little time to to play out and see how the local community responds to that before considering further requirements would be another way to go. But here to here, here for your feedback. So I'll turn it over to you all.
Again, questions or comments in the room?
Yes, I do have a one question. Or or maybe a statement. How do we? There's a there's a commercial building on Main Street that has apartments above it. So how do we get more people to be? How do we get or how do we promote more buildings that are mixed use? And it and it seems like it 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 seems to be a very creative way for us to solve, you know, some of the housing problems that we have.
Yeah, so that will continue to be permitted in downtown, just like it is. And I think that the zoning, there's a lot of discussion right now in zoning circles about what do we do? Or, you know, commercial zones and need for residential and allowing more residential in commercial zones generally. There's been some action from the state that requires cities to permit conversion of commercial buildings into residential. There has also been legislation around allowing any affordable housing project outright in commercial zones. So there's definitely interest as far as specifically creating mixed use housing where there's residential or commercial below and residential above. That is, you know, I would say goes beyond zoning code in terms of creating some financial incentives, creating some relationships with developers that are interested in doing that type. There are a lot of communities that would love to see that. And from what I understand, it can be a difficult development type to make financially feasible. And so I don't I don't want to like overstep my area of expertise, but that is certainly what I've heard from some of my peers that are more economic development specialists. So I would just say we've laid the groundwork in some of the downtown zones for that to happen. Whether or not it does is going to take some further action outside of code.
Did that answer your question, David?
Yes, it did. Thank you very much.
Great. Any questions in the room before we go to other online? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. I'm more or less of the view that, but I don't want, you know, the permissive approach. I have a little bit of an issue with that because, you know, just from past experience with developers here in Carlton that, you know, you know, give an inch, take a mile. And and perhaps, you know, instead of, you know, just requiring in all subdivisions that it be mixed use that perhaps we could look at the number of housing starts that are going to go up. Is it ten homes, twenty homes, thirty homes? You know, maybe it could be, you know, require mixed use once it exceeds a certain number of 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 homes. I don't know, it's just an idea, but I don't like the idea of just leaving it in the hands of the developers.
I agree with Shirley.
Yeah, I agree too. I think making the requirements harder is a good thing.
Okay, we'll go to Susan.
Is he? Hi, thank you. Hey, I would like to add my support for more requirements for diverse housing. I think that's how we build a community that stays with that small town feel. These big subdivisions where everybody's in a single family home and there's really no mixing of of human families. It's just I I really, I can't stress enough how important it is for a community to have a mix of housing within each neighborhood. So I would really like to see the variety of housing requirement, the twenty five percent or however you do that.
Thanks, Susan. It sounds like we have some consensus there. Any other comments in the in the room or folks in support? It's not, but it sounded like everyone was kind of on the same page there.
I guess I would want to comment, like, what are we talking about? Are we talking about every single zone would then require twenty five percent? I mean, right now, we just have the mixed density, the MX district. What is what is the proposal? Are we saying R one, R two, R three, everything is gonna?
Yeah, so I think what the reason I wanted to bring this issue up now is because you're seeing in division two what housing types are going to be permitted in all these different zones and the from a technical point. From a technical point, I think that this mixing requirement would probably get placed in the subdivision standards that you're going to see next month. But since it's so integrally related to this mix of housing, I. Wanted to open up this discussion now so that that'll help me craft some options to bring back to you next month. You know, I I I hear these suggestions, which are really similar to what I was thinking about. Maybe it's tied to the number of. Homes in the subdivision or the size of the subdivision. That could be a good way to structure it. But some other pieces like that. So it would probably apply in the subdivision standards rather than the individual zoning districts. And we'll give some more thought to, you know, whether that means all zones or just some zones. Or if it's just any development over a certain number of units. So think about some different ways to structure and bring back a proposal and or some options for you next month.
I have a question in regards to the existing JR Meadows development. How was the apartment buildings that are there now? Derived that? Was that just all driven by the developers?
Hey, any other questions or comments before we move on to the next topic? Great. Thanks for your discussion on that one. We get some direction for Elizabeth to to work on for next time.
Yeah, thanks. So the next topic to. You know, bring to your attention, this is another one that we're sort of previewing this issue. With this batch of code amendments, we're permitting those. Cottage clusters in all of the residential zones. And we started a discussion last month about, you know, what does that mean? What are the design standards? What are the development standards and heard a real interest in considering a maximum cluster size? So right now, the definition requires. That a cottage cluster be four or more small detached homes around a courtyard. And there was a question slash some interest in like, well, four or more, but how many is more? So looking at the state rules that would apply to cottage clusters. Those don't, you know, again, apply directly to city of Carlton based on your population size, but they do just provide a model and, you know, give you a sense of some best practices. As well as what developers around the state. Might be familiar with. So those rules require that communities allow at least eight homes per cluster. And then the model code makes a recommendation to have no upper limit, just to provide greater flexibility. And there there is still sort of a natural limit. Because these homes have to cluster around the open space that, you know, if you imagine you had a hundred homes, you'd need a really big open space in the middle. To get all of them clustered and facing onto that open space. So. Depending on the site configuration, there is sort of a natural tendency to to keep it clustered. Whether, you know, and so the question is like, how much of a bounds should you put on that? Other cities that we've worked with. Have chosen a maximum somewhere between twelve or sixteen homes. Sometimes that's also been varied based on the zone. So say the lower density R one zone might have a lower limit. Of how many homes can be per cluster and then the higher density zones would have higher or unlimited. So in terms of discussion. Curious to hear your thoughts about any cluster size limits that you'd like to see for cottage clusters. And the preliminary recommendation that's in the packet, you know, is maybe starting a maximum of twelve for the R one and the R two zones. And then having no limit other than sort of the natural design parameters for the R three and the MX zones. So, you know, this is also an area where. Code and development practices are really evolving in real time. And so we haven't heard a lot from other cities. As they've implemented their cottage standards, it's been about a year since they went into effect. You know, what cluster sizes are most likely or most desirable. So. We don't necessar, you know, I don't, I don't have any firm data to share with you to say this size makes the best cluster or this size is what people will do. In absence of regulations, so therefore. You may or may not want to regulate. So that's why, you know, these would be pretty consistent recommendations, but also with, you know. With how other cities are approaching it. And I'd love to hear your feedback.
Questions or comments? Yep, go ahead.
On the R three and MX zones recommending no limit, can you explain and give the rationale for that? Is that just because the size of the area is going to dictate that? Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, sure. Two things. One is that there is sort of a natural limit built in in terms of how they need to cluster around the open space. But also to make it more analogous to. Multifamily and townhouses that are permitted in those zones. So in those zones, you can have any number of apartments, for example. Well, particularly in R three. And so to to limit the cottage cluster, but not, you know, in a zone that already allows for. A large variety of different scales seemed less necessary. But that that maximum of twelve might be more helpful in the R one and R two zone to make it. More neighborhood scale with other housing types in those zones.
A question, what is the? What is the biggest issue with adding more houses to a cluster, would you say?
From, from whose perspective? From the neighbor's perspective, from the developer's? Sorry. From the.
From the city.
The city. Sorry, I I have these motion activated lights. I have to move every ten minutes. There we go. I can't, it's a green building. I can't override the system other than getting up and doing jumping jumping jacks. So, you know, note of caution, green building standards, you think it's a good idea, but. From the city's perspective. I think the benefits from the city's perspective is seeing more of. You know, having a real sense of certainty about the scale of these new developments and feeling more certain that these are going to be compatible. In some of the lower density zones. I think that the concern from a city's perspective is that this kind of a limit could, you know, lock out certain developments. That might otherwise be feasible. I have read some best practices recommendations that say, you know, having this limit can just artificially cap. The number of housing units you get. So say somebody could fit fourteen onto a site. But they're only limited to twelve, then the city has two fewer housing units than they otherwise could have gotten built. So. Those are some cons, or the project might not even happen, right? If twelve isn't going to pencil out for that land development cost, but fourteen would. Then you could be short fourteen units. If someone chooses not to build.
Through increasing the number of houses in a cluster. That's what I'm hearing.
The potential downside has to do with the scale of the development. But again, each cottage is itself, you know, small. We don't say a subdivision can't be more than twelve homes. Or thirty homes or, you know, any number like that. We talk about, you know, what's required to go along with them. So I I think that those are. The potential considerations. From, I suppose from a future residence perspective, I don't know, is it better to live in a community of twelve other homes? That are sharing a common open space or eight or thirty or fifty? You know, that might really be a personal preference. I don't know that we've arrived at like the best. Residential community configurations or whether or not that's a matter for this for city to regulate.
Go ahead, Greg.
Well, how, from your experience with these clusters, you keep talking about a green space area. Who's responsible for that green space area for maintenance and upkeep?
Yeah, the clusters that I've seen form an HOA to own and manage that green space.
Did you say that again?
There's an HOA that is created.
So an HOA. Is required. That you've seen in all.
Go ahead, please.
Oh, yeah. So my only concern about, you know, well, I mean, I think twelve units would be reasonable. But again, just as I had expressed before, in any subdivision, we want to see variety of housing. So I'm assuming, for instance, in the art, if there's, if this cottage cluster is within a subdivision in R three. If we implement this requirement of, you know, different housing types. That you, in other words, you're not going to end up with a sea of cottage clusters. I wouldn't want to see that.
Anyway, yeah.
Maybe that will take care of itself by putting requirements on these various zones or mixed housing.
Yeah, that's definitely one way we could address it.
Anyone else with questions or comments on this topic?
I think one of the things that it's kind of a broad comment, but. One of the concerns I've always had is, I think it's great to to have this discussion facilitate. Mixed housing and more affordable housing, things like that. But, you know, as we can all relate to, we have. We have to provide facilities to those as well. So, you know what I mean? Serving fifty cottages with each sewer lateral, each water line, each things like that, you know what I mean? Kind of starts to tax the system, you know what I mean? And then we get into that great debate of water and things like that. So. It's just kind of a comment I wanted to make. Like, I think it's great what we're doing this, but. We also have these other glaring issues.
But how you said that, and I understand what you're saying, but just going through the land use process and the approval process for an application. We have to look at those issues. And if we can't meet the requirements. Then that. The the application can be denied. Am I correct on that?
Same with bigger apartment buildings and stuff like.
Have they ever said that they can't meet it?
There may be some reluctance on the part of the. The developer to start doing a larger cluster. With fourteen or eighteen or twenty homes in it, which by itself might be self limiting as to the size of the clusters. They may be looking at it because every, you know, the putting that in the infrastructure for something that large. Could be a little bit limiting all by itself.
All right. Anyone else on this topic? Susan.
Yeah, I always come back to, as Shirley said, the diversity of housing. And not, not because I necessarily think it will help affordability, because I think affordability is sort of a moot point. But I do think it's super important to have a mix of housing types. Just so we have that small town feel that we have now. The big subdivisions of just monogamous, just monotony of homes. It makes it feel like a big city and keeping that small town feel. I think it's vitally important that we keep that diversity of housing. Having little houses next to big houses, next to medium sized houses, next to apartments. And I think you'll find that communities can build neighborhoods that way. So above and beyond the the affordability issue, I think that's a moot point. And if we don't regulate it, I I like your recommendation, the actually what you recommended for the unlimited and MX. But I think if we don't regulate it, developers will do whatever is cheapest and most profitable for them. And from experience, we can't ever deny something because we quote unquote, don't have the water facility or we don't have the sewer facility. Because it's our, it's incumbent upon the city to to figure out how to create those facilities. To meet the the demand that the state says how how much we're going to grow. The state regulates how much we're allowed to grow, we're supposed to grow. And if we can't meet those demands right now, then we have to put that infrastructure in place. Or have a plan for putting that infrastructure in place so that we can meet it.
Thanks, Susan. Anyone else from in the room before we move on to the next topic? Okay, sounds like we have some direction.
All right. And next we want to talk also residential related. You'll notice a theme tonight about vacation rental dwellings. And so this is. Looking ahead to next month, the actual vacation rental standards will be in front of you next month. But right now, as we're considering all these new housing types to be added. The question that that's sort of come up already for discussion is which of these new housing types should be allowed to be used as vacation rentals? And so one option is to have vacation, is to have those standards be unit type neutral that. You know, each vacation rental is evaluated on its own terms and it really doesn't have to do with. What, whether it's a duplex or a single family or an ADU or or that it could be any type, as long as it can meet the standards. But the standards could also be limited to specific types. And so. As I understand from Scott, the initial draft of some of these vacation rental standards that was in front of you earlier this fall. Talked about single family units, duplexes and triplexes being eligible. And now as we're looking at adding eighty ADUs and cottages, I know we had some discussion last month about. Should those be permitted to be vacation rentals? Or should those explicitly be prohibited? So for discussion, just curious to hear your thoughts on those two specific types. If they should be allowed as vacation rentals or if they should be prohibited so that they are instead. Sort of reserved for long term housing, which is, you know, not how we treat any other housing types. So I would say in my experience on this issue, this comes up a lot around ADUs. Because ADUs really are pretty well suited to being vacation rentals. And so. If it's not regulated, that is what you could see. And whether that's a good thing or a bad thing. It really depends on the city's perspective. So. Allowing ADUs to be used as vacation rentals can feel like, oh, just created this new thing. We really need this new housing type. For our permanent housing inventory to meet our local housing needs. And this isn't helping anyone if we just let it be a vacation rental. On the other hand. What we've seen from some long term surveys of ADU owners is that. Being, using that ADU as a vacation rental initially can really create the cash flow and the incentive to create the ADU. And after several years, a lot of. Vacation rental operators decide, you know, it'd actually be a lot easier, you know, to not be changing the sheets every couple of days and and managing this. And they convert to long term housing, but having that initial cash flow can really help create these these units. And get them into the city. So those are some trade offs that I've heard specific to ADUs. But there is, you know, a compelling need. We've certainly heard about this variety of housing and and more smaller housing and more affordable housing. And so, you know, it is up to the city to give us some direction on whether it's important to reserve these new housing types for long term housing at this time.
All right. Questions and comments in the room?
I, you know, I would like to see ADUs be open for being vacation rentals. On the, for instance, cottage clusters. If we were to allow that, I think, and that's something I think the city could impose by our ordinances to have a limitation on. How many? In other words, I wouldn't want somebody to come up and, you know, buy all these houses in a cluster and then turn it into a VRBO. So you don't want to have some kind of control. I'm assuming we could do that by our own ordinance. Am I right about that?
How would you see that happening?
Just put it, I, you know, a limit on.
The limit of the number of vacation rentals that one person can own?
No, no, within a cluster.
The limit of the the number of vacation rentals that could be contained within the cluster.
And I'm not saying it's possible. I'm just throwing that out there.
Elizabeth, do you have any experience in that of the limiting the number of vacation rentals in a a cluster? Versus I'm immediately thinking of prices and duplexes and how many units within those. Being vacation rentals as well and how that translates to the overall goal of making things objective and fair.
Yes, well, first. We did, we are just starting a new project in Tillamook County where they, you know, as you can. um, where they, you know, as you can imagine, are dealing with a lot of vacation rental issues also. Uh, and talking to their county planner, they just implemented a new vacation rental ordinance that um, specifically gets at this issue. Um, I haven't read the specifics of how it's worded, but the goal is, um, they came down with, it's one unit per site essentially. So if you have a duplex or a triplex, you can only get a vacation rental license for one of those. And it would be the same for a cottage cluster um, under their model. You, you could pick different numbers, you know, is it twenty-five percent? Is it one? Is it two? But yes, we, I have heard of that. And also just to, um, you know, in terms of whether those standards have to be clear and objective, vacation rentals are not the same as residential. And so they're not subject to the same level of scrutiny under state law. So um, you know, saying one or two units is pretty clear and objective. But if there were additional sort of um, e, more discretionary considerations that you wanted to add to the vacation rental standards, the city would be well within its rights to, to add those as well.
Yeah, not, yeah, I'd like to see that. I just don't, you know, wouldn't want to see somebody come in and buy, you know, every cottage in the cluster and then turn it on a rent and that, that just sort of defeats the purpose and, you know, you know, takes away from the neighborhood uh, concept, et cetera.
I think, I think in Carlton, we're already seeing there were six new townhomes at Monroe and First. And it's my understanding, all six are vacation rentals. There are no permanent residents.
Wow.
As to what Suzie said, oh, this is going to make a nice town for us. It's only on the weekends and they're drinking wine, so.
Those are all six of those owned by the same person or they in, so different people?
Different owners. Different owners. With all the same idea.
A cluster, if you have twelve, we use that number. And say, nine or ten people come in, they all get sold, but two of them are full-time and nine or ten of them put in permits.
Well, we'd have to limit the number within the cluster. I mean, we'll have to discuss that at a later time.
So then, should we be limiting on a particular street in the town? Should we be limiting the number of houses that are turned into vacation rentals? You got fifteen houses on one certain street, and if that's a popular area close, closer to downtown, and you've got different owners that all decide, okay, I want to turn this into a rental, they all come to the city. So should, so should those be limited the same as the cluster? I just curious how, you know.
Yeah, I know.
Cause there are some streets that have more, that have, you know, a fair number of rentals on the, on some streets in town.
There are some blocks that are almost, yeah.
That are filled.
Majority, majority rentals.
Elizabeth, before we go to Susan, do you have any perspectives on that from your experience and research?
The short answer is no, just to say that, you know, I think these are a lot of really important issues. And some of those get into some technicalities of the vacation rental ordinance. Um, whereas I think in terms of writing our residential code standards, the feedback that's going to be most useful is you know, if there's anything specific to these residential dwelling types that we need to write into those standards, we want to make sure we get that. And this, I know the city is working on vacation rental ordinances and, and things like dispersal standards or the number of licenses that you might want to grant, those are all really important policy issues that aren't necessarily part of this zoning discussion. So, yeah.
Susan?
Well, I, I wanted to um, emphasize Shannon's point about clear and objective. Um, after having been on the planning commission and having to gone through a couple of these, it's really not helpful to have vague and not really clear standards when we're making value judgments about whether the characters, the neighborhood changes. You know, those things are really um, problematic for us to decide. Um, so just in, in making the job of the planning commissioner easier, it would be really nice to have really clear, objective standards for those vacation rental object, um, standards.
Thanks. So to Elizabeth's point, um, are, while the que, the questions that were raised are, are very important and things that the city will definitely need to address. For the purposes of this evening, we're looking at these um, two residential housing types. And if there's any um, specific direction, I, and I think what I heard so far was um, having both ADUs and cottage clusters available for um, vacation rentals, but putting some sort of limit, well, at least Elizabeth suggested, and I think some people supported, um, some sort of limit per site. So um, allowing ADUs, but for the clusters having some sort of limit per cluster. That's, that's what I heard anyway. But other questions and comments?
I have a comment. Um, I think we had a conversation about this not long ago about vacation rentals. And we decided not to do anything at the time. I, I was suggesting a limit, but we we decided to monitor and do something if the, if the problem arise based on Amy's, Amy's um, numbers that she had. And as far as the clusters, I, I don't think we, I think everything should be neutral. I don't think we should um, discriminate in a way based on what type of housing it is. If we, if we decide on something else, it should be for everyone, not for, only for those types of housing. So that's, that's my, that's my opinion.
Elizabeth, can you remind us when we will see those vacation rental standards?
Yeah, those will come forward next month. And our work there is really incorporating the draft of the work that Scott had already prepared. Um, and so we, we will bring that forward um, and look forward to your discussion then. That'll be in January. Did I say that already?
Yeah. Scott, did you have anything to add?
Twenty twenty-four.
And I, I don't have anything else to add. I know that the council has uh, talked about. It is a complicated thing with vacation rentals. And so uh, there, there will be more on, on January. So, and it's tough because uh, we, we have sort of a breakdown of, of the various sections here. So there is a piece of uh, you know, ADUs as far as allowing it in the zone. And then you go into a, a different, you know, what we go into in January, we'll be talking about more of the standards. So I know it's kind of a little bit separated here.
Thanks, Scott. Anyone else before we move on to the next topic? All right, Elizabeth.
Okay, and then the last piece, this was more just um, to highlight a, a particular issue around historic sites. Uh, and say that as far as the code updates go, um, the code updates are really focused on um, updating the definition um, so that the historic sites are those historic resources inventoried in the comprehensive plan so that we have a clear tie, uh, legally defensible. And there's really two categories. There are sites that are on the national register um, or registered through the state office, SHIPPO. Or there are, there, the definition allows for locally designated historic sites. And that's, that's based on the recommend, the, you know, some, some best practices from that state um, SHIPPO, the State Historic Preservation Office. Um, but I did want to note, there are not any of those sites currently um, because the city hasn't yet developed a local designation process. And that could be part of future development of a, a much broader historic preservation program um, that could then lead to some further code updates or not. We wanted to lay the groundwork with these code updates that if you were to develop a local designation process, um, any of those sites would meet the definition. But as far as, you know, really having a broad community conversation, there's some recommendations in the memo about resources and, and places you might start. But that could be something really exciting. And I know we've heard some interest already through Shannon about some future work program ideas. Um, and then the other place, just to point out, in this draft code, in chapter seventeen thirty, there is a design standard that ties um, the historic sites requirements together with the downtown design standards. So that's how we have addressed it um, so far and look forward to, to um, yeah, future council discussion and, and how you might move forward on, on other pieces of a, a more robust historic preservation program in the future. So any questions on, on how we've done that?
I really feel strongly that the city, we do need to have some kind of historical standard set and put in place. And I know that the, the design, you know, there's design code that you have to do with, if you were to build a new building, say like the bakery. Cause it would be, it would be sad to have a building taken down and then something more modern put in its place right downtown. And I think it's, it's lacking in what's there right now that it should be a, it needs to be brought up more and something to be taken care of, nothing done with it.
Okay.
Yeah, great point. I mean, you have really a gem of a downtown. So I think there could be some really good community work around strengthening that. Okay, so shifting into the next phase of our discussion tonight, this is where I've got a few code specifics um, that I've pulled out of the, the proposed code updates table to highlight for discussion. You know, as you saw, there's full details, not to mention uh, i- in that table as well as um, hun- a hundred pages or so of code to read. Um, so I, I do want us to get out of here on time tonight. I know you have another meeting, so we're not going to go through each and individual one. Um, but I wanted to focus on some selected, selected issues um, that were highlighted in italics. And those are some that relate more to policy preferences where your input is needed. That's not to say they're like the biggest issues necessarily, they're just the biggest outstanding issues at this point. Because we have made a lot of progress. The other changes um, that are in, you know, that make up the bulk of the recommendations in division one and two, implement the code audit findings, the comprehensive plan policies, um, and our discussions with PAC, with the open house and with you all to date. Um, so we're happy to discuss any other aspects of the table as well tonight. I've left some time at the end. Um, but that we would, we've got about five questions I was hoping to highlight. Be sure to get your feedback on before we open it up to broader questions and discussion. So first one has to do with townhouses in the R two zone. Uh, so for context, that is the medium-density district where single-family ADUs cottages and duplexes are permitted along with up to two attached townhouses. Um, and that really allows for um, a product that's, could be very similar to a duplex, but allows for an ownership opportunity, because those lots can be divided and um, and sold fee simple. So townhouses are currently subject to some residential design standards um, in a different chapter that you'll see next month. Um, but most of those standards as relate to townhouses really have to do with larger sites. So things like how do you get alley access and, and things like that, that wouldn't necessarily be applicable to just two attached townhouses. Um, that would be a much smaller site. And those townhouses um, have to go through the site design review requirements. Um, or they have to meet those requirements and go through the review process, which includes coming before you before the planning commission, I should say. Um, and so the proposed update is that when, when we're, when we're looking at just two attached townhouses that are form-wise pretty similar to a duplex, it's going to be permitted outright. That it, there is an opportunity to remove the site design review requirement uh, and instead review administratively by staff, same way that a single-family home um, is currently done or that a duplex will be done. Um, and that, you know, we talked about creating that variety of housing. And one of the ways to help create that variety is by making, uh, facilitating that development by permitting it outright. And so removing a barrier in terms of an additional planning commission review for just two attached townhouses could help create this um, this expanded development opportunity. And so question for you is, do you support this change um, towards administrative review? Towards administrative review, or do you feel that there's a compelling reason to continue requiring site design review for just those two townhouses in this zone?
I support your proposal here.
Guys, question, um, when you say administrative review, who are we talking? Are we talking about um, engineering? City staff, public works, like all of the above?
Yeah, it would go to Scott um, as your contract planner for review um, through a new um, do you want to talk about the, the type two administrative review that we're proposing to bring forward? Just to put you on the spot.
Am I, am I on the spot for type, type two? Okay, so it is, I just make sure that the, the type two that we're changing, that if it is type two, there would be um, notice to abutting property owners, but there would not be a hearing before um, uh, before the planning commission. So that's kind of the, the new type two, which is uh, I actually did a, we did a um, we did a work session on that already. But um, yeah, that, that's what it would be. So um, abutting property owners are being aware of the proposal. But uh, it would just be a matter of uh, staff reviewing it to clear and objective standards. And uh, there would be the ability to appeal that decision if uh, the applicant or any um, aggrieved party, um, property owner next door, somebody that doesn't like it uh, would be able to appeal that decision to the planning commission. So that's uh, type two in a nutshell.
Would that appeal go to the planning commission and if would that be the end of it? Or would it be, depending on what was going on, would it go further?
You're correct. Excellent question. Uh, because we're concerned about the state mandated, like I say, it's state mandated one hundred twenty-day processing period. We are suggesting that there be only one appeal. So that's also with the, the new type two uh, process that the planning commission would be the final decision-making body of the city in that event, if it's type two.
I don't have my last month's packet in there, but I think that was towards the end of the work session and we never quite got to that. So this is, we never really talked much about the type two. And we don't need to do that tonight. I just, I don't think the decision has been made.
And made it, yeah. And it was a work session, it wasn't last month. It was, uh, I believe a little bit earlier uh, that we have the, I'm trying to track down all of these and whether it was planning commission or a city council. I think it was council and it may have been back in October. Just trying to.
Scott, it was a planning commission.
Oh, it was planning, which means, okay, all right, I apologize.
Just to be clear again, Scott and Elizabeth, the, the proposal here would treat two, two townhomes the same as a single-family home or a duplex. That's, is that right?
You, you know what? I'm glad you pointed that out, Steve, because I might have got, I might be conflating these two changes. Yes, the proposal actually, right, would be um, to move this, right, so how, Scott, single-family homes and duplexes, those go straight to building permit, correct?
Correct. If it is a subdivision, then approved by the city, the plat is recorded, all of the constructions in, all the connections are there. It's just a matter of coming in uh, to the city for a building permit for a single-family detached.
Right, yes. And thank you. That is actually the proposal. Um, I had a chance to check that, yeah. So for this instance, for the two attached townhouses, forget about type two, I apologize, I took us down a rabbit hole. Once the subdivision is reviewed and those lots are created for townhouses, just these two attached townhouses would come forward straight to building permit, um, just like the single-family homes or duplexes.
Okay, and in that event, there would be no notification. That with, with building permits, there is, there is nothing provided. And that's, you know, it's kind of the type one as opposed to the type two.
Correct. Thank you. Apologize.
So since I'm not on the planning commission, I'm kind of curious, uh, what are the, the cons, if there are any? What are the the cons, if there are any, to to going this direction? Do we see a lot of substance in the planning commission process when these things are reviewed or are we kind of saying it's a waste of time and it inhibits development? Throwing that out there for Scott, I think, but.
Yeah, we had to a- ask Commissioner Trenal there. It's a waste of time now. It it's, it's hard to say. I I, there are some, I have received feedback from planning, not just, you know, in other cities too, that one city that I I serve, a lot of things go before the planning commission, home occupation permits, some signs and things like that. And so you get a, sometimes you get a feedback of, oh, wait a minute, can't this be administratively? And maybe we see a variance or maybe some sort of deviation if it is, but yeah, it is that that level of, okay, what what trust do you want to put in at a staff level? Is it is it minor enough? Is it simple enough where, yeah, it's administrative and we have clear and objective standards that staff will follow? And if there is an appeal, it would likely be the applicant saying, no, I don't like the condition or something like that.
And Elizabeth, I just have a clarifying question that's a vague question because I know the answer, but just to make sure everybody's on the same page. There are no inherent differences between two townhomes versus a single duplex except for the ownership piece, right?
A single duplex? I mean, there, there, let let me say it this way. There are types of duplexes that would be exactly the same as two attached townhouses, but there are other types of duplexes that could be, say, an upstairs and a downstairs, and those would not be identical. It would be fair to say that something you could build as two attached townhouses would meet the definition of a duplex. You know, if it were on a single property, a single lot. Yeah.
Susan, planning commission perspective?
So, um, I'm supportive of it being administrative. If the if the standards are clear and objective and it's just kind of doing a checklist. I mean, there's really not a lot of talk to talk about on the planning commission if if the standards are met and they're clear and objective. The only time I think it would be worthwhile kicking it back to planning commission is if there were variances asked for. And then I think when, at the point at which there's variances, then I I think a larger discussion is necessary. So I, that's, that's where I come down on that.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the room or or thoughts on support or otherwise for this proposal?
Was a duplex included in with the two townhouse model thing that we're discussing?
Well, duplexes are are a separate use category, but they would also be reviewed the same way.
It would become an administrative tour.
Are they already reviewed that way?
Well, they're not currently permitted.
Right, right.
So we're proposing to introduce them.
I support.
All right, thank you. Next question, jumping up a little in intensity, looking at the R three zone. That's the the medium high density district, the highest density zone in Carlton. And so there's a a full range of housing types permitted. I think I I saw, I also noted in the table that right now you can do everything from single family to multifamily and considering that this is the only zone where you can do multifamily and some other higher density housing types, you might consider long term. You know, whether it continues to make sense to permit single family there or if it should be limited, given that there's so many opportunities in the R one and the R two zone and and this particular land could be used more intensely. But that's a a longer term question. Right now, there is a an existing minimum density and a maximum density of thirty two units per acres. We're not proposing to change that maximum, but the proposed update does include an increase from eight units to twelve units per acre for the minimum density, really to stay more in keeping with the purpose of that zone and to provide a, you know, qualitatively different development opportunity than the R one and the R two zones. So just for context, the R one zone has a four point six units per acre minimum. It's five point eight units per acre in the R two and eight units per acre in the MX. And so moving up to twelve, you know, again, would just sort of continue that gradation and create a different opportunity, encouraging that smaller format and higher density housing to create greater variety across the city. And so question is, do you support that increase to the minimum density to to help get us to more efficient land use and greater variety of housing types?
I would support it with the with the new minimum density standard and smaller minimum lot size.
Yes, that's the next question.
I support it too.
Am I? I'm sorry.
No, just you're doing a great job anticipating higher minimums go with lower minimum lot sizes. Yes.
Well, maybe if we're hearing support, if there's no other, was there a raised hand there? Yep, go ahead.
Yeah. I'm I'm curious about how this description would match with what we've seen over in Newburgh right now with the townhouses and the stuff they've put in there. Would that, would it allow that kind of density?
Without knowing the specifics of the Newburgh propos- of the development you're talking about, I can say that I helped Newburgh update their townhouse requirements a year or two back. So based on what I know there, their townhouses can be as much as like twenty to twenty five units per acre. So that would be very much within the proposed range of twelve to up to thirty two units per acre.
So it would be, it would be com- what we're proposing, what you're talking about here would be comparable to what they've done over there.
What we're proposing here would allow that same model, yes. But it would allow greater things that are slightly, again, not knowing the exact one you're talking about, but it would allow, you know, things on either end of that, a little more dense and a little less dense than that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, let's. If you're gonna, if you're gonna put in here where they can build twenty units per acre, most contractor developers are gonna push it right to the edge.
Yeah.
And it's gonna look, I think, maybe, correct me, as when I think of in the Newburgh, you're where you're going, the bypass now is nothing but where I grew up, they call them shotgun houses. It's just row after row after row, and they're about five feet apart. And that's high density housing. And is that what we want in this town, this town to look like?
That's why I was asking that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know which ones you're thinking of, but
That's, yeah.
Those are the ones that come to mind, come to mind. No.
Nothing. I mean, all of our subdivisions don't look like a small town anymore.
And just just a couple of clarifications. The maximum density in these zones is, in this zone, is already thirty two units per acre, and that's not something we're proposing to change. The only thing we're proposing to change is increasing the minimum density from eight to twelve. And also, this is just the R three zone that goes up to thirty two units per acre. If you flip back to your zoning maps, this is only applied to really a handful. Well, I guess more than a handful, but select parcels, most are fairly near to downtown. But it is is not applicable to all of the the residential areas in the city. So meant to be a little more targeted.
Susan?
And I have real empathy with both Linda and Grant's comments. But I think if we come back to that variety of housing, then we stop having those homogeneous, just huge, every house looks the same. It's packed in like sardines. If you have that diversity and we we really do impose a diversity requirement on all the zones, then I think, I I think that helps that. And and just sort of a philosophical question, I, when this whole density things first came before the planning commission, my thought was, well, then we save our urban growth boundary because we pack more houses in and then we have more space to develop. But I guess in real life, it feels like we're almost to our urban growth boundary already. And like the subdivision just keep getting built. And I don't So I'm not sure that my initial premise that making them very, very dense saves our urban growth boundary for longer. I know once we fill it up, we'll just have to move it out. I mean, that's the requirement by the state is just to move it out further. So I'm, in in terms of just thinking of how do we make it the best we can do with the parameters that we work within, I I think the best thing is is to allow that density and require the variety of housing.
Thanks. Other thoughts in the room? Or online?
I personally don't, I I think that the the way it's written already gives that diverse support for a maximum of thirty two units an acre. I don't see a need to to increase the minimum, in my opinion. I mean, with the very limited area we're talking about, but that's just I feel like bumping it up from eight to twelve. There's still a lot to do thirty two if they want to.
Others?
I don't know. The way I see it, we're looking at a minimum. We're not looking at the maximum. So the minimum, like we are increasing the amount of houses there that we, that we're requiring a minimum. And I think overall that's good. I think the small city thing is very subjective. Like, for me, Portland's a small city. I hope, Portland will grow regardless. I think we we may like it or not, but Portland will grow. People come, more houses will be built. I think it's whether or not we we want to have more affordable housing or have more people have different housing. I think that's where we have an option, which we can choose. But as far as growth, we can't really stop it, so. That's my opinion. I think a minimum, increasing the minimum is always good.
Others in the room? Thoughts one way or the other? Hey, I'll go back to Susan.
I just, I I am in favor of increasing the minimum only because it will force them to use the land as is, as we intend it to be used for that, those places where we designate an R three zone. We want the houses to be dense. We don't want them to build one or two really expensive houses in an R three zone. And then waste that space and make it so that we have to move our urban growth boundary sooner.
Thanks, Susan. Well, we're hearing a variety of opinions here. And we certainly can make final decisions at a later date. Elizabeth, do you have any other? I don't know, nuances on your on your question? I mean, right now, we're hearing kind of a variety of opinions, so, but I want to keep us on time, so I'm trying to.
Yeah, well, that's, the next question is really a companion piece, but you know, I I'm hearing a much broader conversation about, you know, what is the form and scale of development that we want in our community overall? And and I think that some of these questions that are being raised are really important to consider. And I don't I think that the eight to twelve is not necessarily going to be the driving factor in, you know, it being too dense. It's really more, you know, as we've heard, like, if you allow up to thirty two, you might get up to thirty two. And is that in keeping? So so that's going to be an ongoing conversation for the city and and how to use these R three zones. But a companion piece to this that'll maybe, you know, help elicit some you know, this discussion further or refine the point is a companion pieces with increasing that minimum density up to twelve as proposed for, you know, depending on your further policy direction. The proposed update is to decrease the minimum lot size for single family dwellings in this zone. Right now, they're allowed to be four to five thousand square feet, depending on whether it's a an interior or a corner lot. And those are fairly large minimum lot sizes for what's supposed to be, you know, the densest zone in Carlton. So since we've heard about, you know, creating a variety of housing, creating smaller houses, another way to get at more smaller housing options is this proposed change for a minimum lot size of three thousand square feet for these single family detached dwellings in those zones. And so that allows for more flexibility within that density range that, you know, developing a three thousand square foot minimum lots puts you over twelve units per acre, so you could go a little bigger i- if you wanted, but certainly allows flexibility within that density range, allows you to meet the minimums and and go a little over. And just to compare, there's, you know, listed the minimum lot sizes for single family detached in other zones to see that, you know, again, this is supposed to be the densest zone in the city. So allowing that three thousand square feet would be consistent with that and sort of provide a gradation. And then another piece on the dimensional standards that goes, you know, if you're thinking about three thousand square feet for these smaller lots, it's important to scale the setbacks so that there actually is a building footprint on that lot where the homes can go. And so the, because there's such a variety of housing types being proposed in the zone or that are already permitted, frankly. And different lot sizes, making sure that larger sites still have the fifteen to twenty foot buffers or setbacks that provide for that buffering for some larger lots, apartment development or the higher density townhouses like we're talking about, like have been brought up. But that if you're building on lots smaller than five thousand square feet, so say you wanted to take advantage, say a developer wanted to do some single family detached on these three thousand square foot lots that those front and rear setbacks could be reduced to ten feet just to create a larger, a more feasible building envelope. So questions about, you know, when you consider some of these changes help support achieving that minimum of twelve units per acre? So I don't know if it helps to consider it as a whole package, but do you support the proposed changes and and direction for the R three zone here?
So a continuation of our discussion, but with some new, some new flavors added to the, to the mix.
I support this new flavor.
I I agree with the reducing the setbacks because, you know, in order for the house sitting on the lot to be proportional, proportional. You know, otherwise it wouldn't make sense.
Other folks in the room have feelings one way or the other on this?
Struggle a little bit because I'm on board with the thing, but the back of my mind, it just feels like we're cramming a lot into smaller spaces with every point that we're, we're kind of discussing. So that's where I have the the other side of me struggle. So.
Now, is there any way to put in some kind of ruling or code or whatever wording necessary needed? Or on these, where you can do these, say, twenty to thirty units per acre? Unlike what we see on the bypass, they're all the same, that there, there has to be more of a variety of the style, the look where you have different, you know, different houses every four or five that are different or something of that nature, where you don't have just the same one blueprint, they build thirty of them.
Yeah, that is something that would come up in the residential design standards to require some housing variety. And I've definitely seen standards written around that that can meet the clear and objective test. And I could bring you some options when we get to that section of code, if that would be of interest.
Would for me.
Would for me.
Okay, great.
Susan?
Um, so, um, double thumbs up to Grant's idea, I love that. Um, and then my other point, I, I can't ever think about increasing this density and all this impermeable surface without. Some reassurance that stormwater will be handled within each subdivision and that pedestrian and, um. And cycling access will be to, will be. Part and parcel of getting from these dense subdivisions to some open space or to some park space within our city. I, um, those, those two things are of utmost importance if we're going to build this density, which I'm supportive of the density, but. I, I want it to be livable.
Yeah, we'll talk about stormwater and bike pad um as we get into some of the design standards, so thanks. It is a package.
Uh, one quick follow-up question to the setbacks, um. How does, you know, if the, if the setbacks were reduced? Um, forgive me for not knowing off the top of my head, but does then, does then not affect the other? Code setbacks we have about. Things like sheds come to mind, so you know what I mean, if we scale that down, then somebody physically can't have a shed in their backyard. You know, things like that, is that going to have to come into play as well? From property lines for different things. So it feels like if you shrink that, then it also. Limits the other things.
We can definitely look at the accessory structures setbacks, um. And just make sure that those are aligned. Are you concerned about if? You know, if one person has their three thousand square foot lot and they build. That they don't then have room in their backyard for a shed or that the sheds on somebody else's property are then.
Oh, that they don't have because of city code has a different setback that where the shed can be from. The property line, if there's. You know, not enough space before you hit your house, you know what I mean, that, yeah.
Sure, yeah, sure. Okay, well, we can take a look at that, I would also just say that, you know, three thousand square feet or, or whatever, you know, lot size someone chooses like. You're gonna have to make some choices potentially, so I don't know that we need to set the setbacks. So that they reserve enough space for someone to put a shed in the back so much as create options and people can choose. Am I gonna build a house here or am I gonna scale the house here and leave some more room for a shed? Um, but we'll certainly um take a look to make sure we're not creating any conflicts.
Or are there not code right now about? Um, how many square feet of solid surface? House, outbuildings, concrete, on whatever size lot that, that you're.
Your subject matter experts nodding her head.
Yeah.
Yes, there are maximum lot coverage standards already, and then there's also some, I believe some size limitations for accessory structures themselves.
So those will have to be adjusted.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, was what, what Kevin's ringing up about, say, shrink the lot. If you keep the five-foot setback.
That's a problem.
That area gets, is gonna get smaller and smaller of what you can cover.
Yeah, we'll take a look at those, um, those setbacks, as I said, to make sure there's no conflicts and, um, see what we can bring back to you.
I know we have, I think, two more topics to cover. So, okay, go ahead.
All right, um, let's make sure we get through these so that we can open it up for some questions and if we need to come back to anything. Um, so dimensional standards in the downtown zone, so, you know, overall, as we discussed last month. Respecting all the work that's been done um here, and so we are mostly just. Seeking clarification on one particular point, um, in the downtown district that has three sub-districts. There are minimum and maximum height standards. Um, so Main Street, and here's the map for reference, Main Street, there's a twenty-one foot minimum and a thirty-five foot maximum. Uh, railroad is the same, twenty-one foot mend, thirty-five foot max. Um, and it's just in the winery gallery district, there is not a current minimum height, but there is the same thirty-five foot maximum. Um, and just the way the standards are written. You know, this could have been intentional, this could have been an oversight, um, we're trying to piece it together and put it in one central dimensional standards table so that. It's a lot clearer to folks when they're looking to build, and so the question that I have for you is. Um, would you like to see the same twenty-one foot minimum height applied to the winery gallery sub-district? Or, you know, was that intentional and there's a different character intended there? Um, so you'd like to preserve having no minimum?
I couldn't understand exactly where the winery gallery area is, where you can start on Monroe.
Um, it is. The purple district on the northern half of downtown, so yes, um, this is Monroe here. Um, so it's all the lots facing onto Monroe. On both sides of the street.
He was looking for that map. Oh, that map that she's got is seventy-five, yeah.
The winery galleries.
I frankly think it should be the same, I think it should be consistent between the, the areas.
Yeah, Monroe is a soccer field.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so that. The winery gallery right now was what?
No minimum. As I read the code, there is no specified minimum in winery gallery. But the way that there's standards for the overall zone and the sub-districts, I'm not, I just couldn't tell if that was an intentional. Or if it was an oversight and that this was our opportunity to make it more standard.
Why should you have a minimum, my question?
Yeah, minimum heights are used um to create a more consistent form and scale across the district. Or across the sub-districts, um, and, you know, it um. Allows more of a sense of enclosure on the street and creates sort of a, a scale between the buildings and the width of the streets. Um, sort of a, a consistent building facade presence along the street to help engage visitors, pedestrians.
Does anyone remember if there was a reason or know if there was a reason why? The winery gallery um was treated differently than the main street and the railroad, that might get to the question of. Um, whether it should just be standard across or if there was some specific reason why it was the no minimum was, was placed in that area.
Maybe, maybe, I don't know if this is true, but I'm gonna make something up, but maybe because there's a lot of buildings that are currently there that aren't twenty-one feet tall. So like, it would, I know it wouldn't apply for existing buildings, I'm just saying, we want to impose a new height requirement. You know what I mean, with existing buildings that don't have it, I mean, there's not a lot of tall buildings necessarily in that. Further north area. From my knowledge, I mean, that's First Federal.
Is that the first federal in that area?
That's forty-seven Yam Hill.
Okay.
Where the arrow is.
Yeah.
So I mean.
Grocery store, First Federal.
I don't know the reason why there wasn't a minimum, but I feel like it's outside of. The downtown Main Street, I don't, I don't.
Yeah.
I don't feel like there needs to be.
I feel that that, I feel that that part of town has a very unique character to it. Um, and, and I, I feel that imposing a uh, uh, a height requirement. Uh, might take away from, from the unique character that we have in that district. That's just, that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
That I've used with all that more forty-seven, only to talk about the alignment. And about taking trucks off Main Street. Is that our opportunity to expand downtown uses, that's really where we would expand our downtown. And so that's some of the conversations I've had with them about safety and about. Um, moving it just one block north. And so, just so you're aware that that's one thing that I've talked to them about is that if. If we are going to expand our downtown area, that's the natural place to do it.
Absolutely.
To the north.
Yeah, because it's kind of blocked in on, on the other sides.
Any other strong feelings one way or the other?
Right. Let's see, next one, height standards for three. These are what you're. Proposing or this is what they are now?
This is what they are now.
The proposed is at the bottom, um.
Where it says proposed update, is that?
Yeah.
Got it, sorry.
No, no problem.
Assuming, well, the structures that already exist in the winery gallery area. Like First Federal, like the grocery store, like many of them are, you know. Much lower height, um, so obviously those, I would assume are, would be grandfathered in, but to the extent that new structures going in. That we make that requirement twenty-one feet, you would think that that might also encourage. More multiple uses with it in a building, and if it's just single level, that kind of takes that option away. So I kind of like the idea of a twenty-one foot minimum. For new structures.
Yeah, I, I think it goes with our historic aspect of our town to try to keep that. That is just one block beyond Main Street. I think no more than two stories, which Main Street has two stories, so. If that's twenty-one feet.
I think we're hearing a little bit of a mix of opinion here, uh, some folks kind of. Would prefer to just leave it as is and some say, well, maybe it makes sense to make it consistent, but I don't know that we're gonna. Resolve that tonight, but uh, I know we have one more issue to get to, but if there's more on this topic, we can. Um, pause on this one for another minute or two.
I'm fine with the twenty-one minimum, yeah, because if you're gonna be building.
Yeah, it'd be at least twenty-one feet tall.
Yeah.
Well, just as sake of argument, if there was a, where the existing one low grocery store. Was there no more, and there was another grocery store there that was on the bottom floor and then.
Something on.
And then something on top, so it gives more options for use, commercial use.
Yeah.
Some expansion, but not overpoweriness with a ten-story building.
Right.
Well, and that would, that's what that would give us, right?
Right.
Right, okay.
Then there's the cost factor that factors in, and are you discouraging development?
Right.
From somebody who wants to put in a tasting room or somebody who wants to put in a restaurant and we're saying, you gotta build it twenty-one feet tall.
To go with our historic situation.
Yeah, we have the future time to discuss this.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, well, let's talk about the last issue and then you can, uh, we can all decide how to spend our last minutes as we wrap up. So the permitted last question that I pulled out for you is looking at the commercial zones, there's two, there's the. Commercial business and commercial industrial, those are the sort of salmony color, I would call it, and the lighter pink color. Uh, right now, a range of retail service and office uses are permitted, um, in terms of scale, we're looking at thirty-five feet for a maximum height. And the lodging uses, um, you know, we talk about vacation rentals in the residential zones, while the flip side is permitting more commercial lodging. Um, right now, only bed and breakfast and vacation rentals are permitted in those commercial zones. Um, and so the potential update, I should have phrased it, um, is would you like to see lodging uses be expanded? To allow hotels and motels in one or both of these commercial zones. Um, which would be similar to what's permitted in downtown, right now downtown is the only zone where hotels and motels are permitted in the city. Um, and would you like to see those in the commercial zones?
I want to see, where, where is that now?
This is just an excerpt from the zoning code map, but I thought it would.
Yeah.
Discussion.
Page fourteen. Yeah, you're thirteen.
Well, thirteen, fourteen.
It's allowed here.
Well, so we're talking about this, right, that? Are we talking? Are we talking about the little pink ones or are we talking about the big pink block?
Dark.
Both. But you could differentiate.
So there's that and those guys, okay. Thank you. Okay, so both of these.
I, I would agree, I think it makes sense, you can spread out a little, not just be in downtown, but.
Yeah, that's my music studio.
Sorry, I heard one counselor say that it makes sense to allow it to spread out a little, but there were a couple of people talking, so I just want to make sure. Everybody heard that.
All right, that's Washington Street coming down there. Yeah. I guess I'd be comfortable with the expansion up on the, the um, north. North side, those northern blocks, I'm not. Sure about. The southern end.
Why?
Well, because there's a lot of residential areas right down in there. That's along the railroad tracks, all back in there, that's mostly residential. Main Street. Now up here, there's. There's residential, but it's a little bit more. Isolated. You could go ahead and put. Business in there and it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect it to the same.
My unpopular opinion is no. Maybe it's unpopular, but no, why is that? Um, because I don't think, I think there's areas that are so far spread out in town. You know, to feasibly have a hotel in the middle of a residential area, I don't think any of our community members would love that. Um, just my opinion.
Yeah.
I mean, most of that is in residential. Areas, I feel like. If it's allowed in the downtown core.
Uh, when you go north on Yam Hill, isn't that where the Napa store is and those kinds of things, as you go out?
Going to say, just a reminder that, uh, in the proposal is with notes that. You could differentiate between those two zones, the darker pink and the lighter pink, did I get that right, Elizabeth?
Thanks.
Yeah, that changes it then, for sure.
The darker pink on the northwest side would be up off of Scott Street. Um, there isn't much residential up there to start with.
That could be allowed right here.
But you're, you're kind of going. I just, as it stands right now, all of this from south of West Maine. Is mostly. Mostly residential as it is.
Yes, and you have a few little scattered in.
Yeah, I agree with you, uh, um, Kevin, about not having like allowing hotels, motels. In that area that's primarily residential.
It gets away from everything, we're kind of talking about communities and things like that.
Yeah.
Reminder for context, though, this is only talking about commercial and so probably home ready, so. It is already not.
On the south side, the Leneur and the. The vet and the old post office that Ken Wright has remodeled, some of those things, I don't know, it's that further one down by Polk. What would be commercial in there?
There isn't. There isn't. You've got the train, train, the rail corridor coming right through there.
Isn't South Park from Maine to Grant commercial? Hard for me to, well, it's hard for me to read that, so small.
Is this something that could, we could come back to and think about a little bit more?
And look at a bigger map.
I would say a couple things, one, we can come back to it, and you know, another, I would say is, you know, if in doubt, leave the code as it is, you know, we're not looking to make changes just for the sake of making changes. But you know, if you don't have strong feelings about adding it in these areas, then there's really no reason to. It's just an opportunity because the code book is open. But yeah, we can definitely come back to it.
Appreciate that, thank you.
All right, and that just, I I know that we are, that you have additional meeting to get to, so wanted to open it up to discussion if there's, we have just a few minutes, but if there's anything that you wanted to point out or highlight, where you have some additional questions, if we can make a quick clarification or come back to you next month to to help do that, I would love to hear from you.
Thank you all for all of your hard work on this, this was not a simple project, I know.
Thanks for your great discussion tonight, we really dove into all these topics and made some progress, so thank you.
We'll look at some bigger maps that we can see on, old people can't see as well.
A question, just in general, do these and we've got the agricultural holdings, do city planners ever put down their wishes, like we have an agricultural holding here, but we wish it would be developed and look like this or that, or that's just not possible?
Actually, that is addressed in comprehend, in the comprehensive plan. It's actually really rare to see agricultural holding within city limits, like the city has, generally, by the time it comes into city limits, there is that. I mean, we call it a twenty-year long-range plan, some people call it a wish list, you know, I mean terminology. So yes, there generally is a plan, because those areas have gotten into the city limits already. What is proposed as this part of this broader project is a comp plan policy to have a a future land use visioning process for all of those areas that would, you know, sort of sketch in, this is going to be residential, this is going to be commercial, so that there's more direction and on that.
And I think, Elizabeth, if I'm not wrong, it doesn't say so in the comprehensive plan, but one of the things we talked about with our, maybe with staff or with our advisory committee was knowing that the city at some point will be doing another housing needs analysis, that that might be a good time to have that conversation.
Yes, I've heard similar.
Elizabeth and Steve just wanted to also chime in as we're talking about the development code, and one significant change that that council should be made aware of with respect to the AH zone is the minimum lot size, it's right now five thousand, which is considerably small. What we're proposing is if you partition property that is AH zone, it goes up significantly, I don't know if Elizabeth has that number handy.
Three acres is what we said.
Three acres, so that goes up quite a bit, we'll do a special notice that will go out to all property owners, those who own AH land, and you'll probably hear from a couple of them saying, wait a minute, no, that's not right, I want to partition my property for less. There's reasoning behind that, what we're trying to do is not partition land to make it more difficult to assemble land, oh, yeah, it is what Steve mentioned there, plan policies to try to convert the AH zone to to make it feasible to 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 a residential zone or whatever, to to rezone it accordingly. And so it's very difficult when you have all these small lots, very strange, too, to have five thousand square foot lot when the AH zone, agricultural zone, it's really not a residential zone. So just, I just wanted to give you as a heads up on that.
Thank you. Okay, how are we doing, guys?
Yeah, I'll just stop sharing and turn it over to you, I know we're at at time that you had requested us to wrap up, so want to thank you all for your time, and if you have further questions, be sure to get them to Shannon, and we'll be back next month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Thanks, we got four minutes. Eight o'clock, and we're opening the December fifth, twenty twenty-three session regular work session of the City Council, Carlton City Council. Okay, call the roll call, please.
Me, Mayor Linda Watkins.
Here.
Council President Shirley Ward Mullin.
Here.
Counselor Kevin Skipper.
Here.
Counselor Mayor May Brando.
Here.
Counselor Grant Erickson.
Here.
Counselor Carolyn Thompson Reiser.
Here.
And Counselor David Samuel.
Here.
All councilors are present and accounted for.
Thank you. Please join with me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It feels like it's been forever since we've done one of these, I learn everything from scratch. Okay, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
There's one addition to the agenda, about the East Main sidewalk program.
And that will be?
The various.
Are there any ceremonies, appointments, or announcements?
One announcement, I'll turn that over to Ms. Emerson. Oh, okay, we are recipients of a DLCD Housing Class Planning Assistance Grant, so it's around fifty-two thousand dollars. That money is going to be helping us to further continue our development code and comp plan update in regards to housing, so a lot of the zoning stuff that you guys went through tonight is going to help
Great, that's good news. Thank you. You can come in anytime if you bring.
Good news, I guess.
Yeah. All righty, okay, those are ceremonies and appointments, citizen comments. All righty. This is the section of the agenda that allows members of the public to address the city council on any items off or on the agenda. When invited by the mayor, members of this public shall come forward, state their name and street address, and deliver all comments to the mayor. Comments are typically limited to three minutes unless additional time is allowed by the mayor. We start this with item A, which is items that are not on the agenda, do we have any members of the public that want to speak?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Thank you, okay, we'll move on to item B, which are comments on items that are on the agenda, do we have anybody who wants to make any comments?
No hands raised at this time.
Thank you, in that case, we will move on to the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All righty, ordinances, resolutions, discussions, and action items. Item A is the twenty twenty-four draft federal agenda, and check in with Michael Skipper from CFM Advocates. I guess you're up.
I'm up, great.
You're up.
I think I have a power to, but my name is Michael Skipper, CFM Advocates, great to be here. I'm going to try and keep this relatively brief, for my own ranking at least, to try and allow time, I know you've been here for two hours, and allow some time for questions and discussion, if you have any, but here tonight, as the mayor mentioned, to provide an update on the city's federal advocacy services. I'm going to go over some of our recent successes, I'm going to provide an update on the twenty twenty-four federal agenda, and then talk about some things I expect to see happen in Washington DC over the next year. You can just go to the second slide if you'd like. But since it's been a while since CFM has made a presentation, I think I'll just provide a bit of background. So we started working together, CFM and the city of Carlton, in late twenty twenty-one. But the federal funding cycle really roughly follows the calendar year, so we really began in earnest in January twenty twenty-two. And I don't know if this is completely true, but I like to think it's true, that CFM is a firm, we do more for our clients than your typical DC lobbying firm, because a big part of that is we're an Oregon firm. Most of our team in DC are Oregonians, I grew up just down Main Street here, so we take a real personal interest in both your success and your failure. So because of that, we worked with Shannon and your team from beginning to end, each year, at the beginning of each year, we develop a federal agenda that's based on many conversations with your team and input from you all, to not only identify the city's priorities, but to develop and prioritize a list of projects that align both practically and politically with federal funding streams, as well as the interests of your congressional delegation. We can go to the next slide, but I'm thrilled to report that it has been a very successful two years in Carlton federal level. So since twenty twenty-two, working with you and your congressional delegation, we've secured over four million dollars in direct federal appropriations. So in our first year in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, there was two point two million dollars for the sewer collection pipe replacement, as well as one point five million dollars to make improvements to West Main Street. This year, we didn't quite meet that benchmark we set in FY twenty-three, but still, working with Congresswoman Salinas, we secured in the draft FY twenty-four House bill five hundred thousand dollars for additional sewer infrastructure improvements. And the reason I'm so excited about this is because the federal funding appropriation process is incredibly competitive. To get even one earmark a year is really hard, to get to three in two years is really awesome. And a big reason for that is, you know, House members, your representative, she can only submit up to fifteen projects, as most of you probably know, from her district, and she probably receives upwards of a hundred. And out of those fifteen, she's not even guaranteed to get funding for all of those. On the Senate side, they can submit as many projects as they want, but they're getting hundreds of requests from across the state, and they only end up being able to secure funding, there's only so much funding to move around, so they only secure funding for a fraction of those, give you an example. Your West Main Street project in FY twenty-three was one of just three transportation projects in the entire state of Oregon in the Senate bill. So that's how competitive, and the bulk of these requests are for transportation, it's all from cities and counties who need transportation money. So we're really.
Is that the state or across the country, three?
Sorry?
In the state of Oregon?
Yeah, on the Senate side, yeah, so Merkle and Wyden, we're only able to get three projects, three transportation projects, and you're, it was one of them that year. So a really big accomplishment, and I think it is a testament to the great work of your team here, Shannon and the rest of your team, they're working with me every step of the way, helping write and submit these applications, secure letters of support, answering my annoying after-hours phone calls when I need last-minute information. So we're just, we're really excited about the success we've enjoyed so far, and I think you should be proud of the work your team has done. So moving on to twenty twenty-four on the next slide, this is a very preliminary list, we've only just kind of begun conversations about what we're going to focus on in twenty twenty-four, but a lot of it will look familiar. Southeast Carlton Fire Flow Improvement Project to Increase Water Capacity in the southeast side of town is a really good project, it just hasn't made the cut in previous years, for whatever reason, but I think it's definitely worth pushing for again. Sewer collection pipe replacement in our conversations with your department heads and Shannon, it's even though it's been, you've secured two point seven million dollars in the past two years for wastewater, that's, there's more need than two point seven million dollars, so I think we're going to continue going after more wastewater funding this year as well, similar situation with West Main Street, I know I've talked to a few of you about that, the reality of transportation earmarks is that they have to flow through ODOT, and that may limit the amount you can get done with that money. So we'll likely be going after additional funding for West Main Street to try and help the city realize its original vision for that project, and make sure that's accomplished. The emergency operation improvements is is the only new thing, the relatively new thing, those are all different projects, but similar in scope, the emergency operation improvements what came from a discussion with the Chief of Police and Public Works in that it would be used as, it would be kind of a hybrid project to be used for the city to purchase both emergency radio equipment and infrastructure to ensure your first responders can can communicate with each other in other neighboring jurisdictions in the event of a natural disaster, as well as equipment to outfit your new emergency operations center as well, so that's what we're envisioning with that project. And again, this is a very, this is living document, I of course welcome any of your input, and it may change throughout the year, but that's what we're, that's what we're working off of right now.
I have a question.
Yep.
So going back to the first slide, we've showed Salinas is.
Yes.
What what's I, what's the timing on that versus this, I'm confused.
So, so those first two, there's a reason it's in yellow, and I forgot to say that, so I apologize. The reason it's in yellow is it's not quite final yet, and you can, actually, this kicks off the last slide, so even though the federal fiscal year began October first, they have not passed fiscal year twenty-four spending yet. So you're in the House draft bill, that will ultimately become law, but it hasn't been passed by Congress.
That's the Salinas part of it, right, okay, and then this last slide is the next cycle.
But it's, we're, it's in the current cycle, so Salinas secured in the, you have to work a year in advance, so this year Salinas secured in the fiscal year twenty-four bill, five hundred thousand dollars, that's still pending because they haven't passed the bill yet, but you're at the final stage, and you're in the bill. So right now, we're operating under what's called a continuing resolution, or CR, as you're familiar with, which just extends fiscal year twenty-three levels, well, it essentially buys Congress time to work out an agreement on top-line spending numbers and pass all twelve of those appropriation bills that your project is in. So all goes well, so I guess to provide a little more context, the CR we're operating under this year is a little different than previous years in that it is tiered.
What was it?
It's been all over towards me now.
It's a stick bug, isn't it?
So this CR is unique in that it's tiered, so about a third of the federal government, if no funding is approved, will expire January nineteenth, and then the remaining two-thirds on February second. This is a initiative by our newly-elected Speaker Mike Johnson to try and avoid a big gripe of House Republicans in previous years is there's always a CR through October and November until the end of December, and then they end up getting jammed by Senate Democrats with the omnibus spending bill that they have to just accept or shut down the government. So this is an effort to try and avoid that, to give Congress more time and to focus more on the individual bills and pass them in order like Congress is supposed to do, but hasn't really done in recent memory. So if all goes well, and I'm optimistic it will, by early February, that bill will be signed into law by the president with your five hundred thousand dollars in it. So then you'll actually have over four million dollars, and you may, you may be wondering, where is our money, particularly the three point seven we got last year? The earmark process is excruciatingly slow. So these bills, like, take this year for example, we submitted these projects in March. We're still waiting until February now for the bills to pass. Once the bills are passed and signed into law, we have to wait several months to hear from these federal agencies who are responsible for getting the money to you, then we have to go through their process, which takes several months to submit all the forms and cross all the I's, so there's just a lot of red tape. The good news is, Shannon, Christie, and I, we've been working with EPA on your two point two million dollar earmark, and we just submitted what I hope is the last form to EPA, so that money should be coming in pretty soon, the West Main should be, should start making some progress soon, I hope. So you're going to start seeing some of this in action really soon, but it takes, you know, a year and a half. To really get your hands on the actual money, even though we've known it's coming for a while. And then just quickly, the rest of this in terms of what to expect in DC. I wouldn't expect a lot of landmark legislation coming in the next year. With the divided, with the Republican House Senate, with the Democratic Senate. As well as the tight margins in both those chambers, it gives individual members as well as small sub-caucuses a lot of power to stop anything they don't like. And there's a lot members of Congress don't like. So that said, there has been monumental legislation passed the past few years that. Have created a lot of opportunities for cities like Carlton in the infrastructure package and the Inflation Reduction Act. But similar to the earmark process. Once Congress passes something, it takes a while for these agencies to get it up and running. So that's something we're continuing to monitor. Into the next year, particularly the Inflation Reduction Act provides a lot of opportunities. For renewable energy and things like that that could be a part of. Projects like your new city hall. And so it's something we're keeping an eye on and making sure the city is prepared to take advantage of that. In terms of what Congress will do. And it's kind of wrapped up in the whole appropriation process is additional supplemental funding for the. Wars in Israel and Ukraine, as well as additional disaster relief FEMA. The FEMA Director has said that they need, I think, an extra $16 billion to deal with disaster relief in places like Hawaii and Louisiana and Florida. And then the border wall and immigration policy reform. That's probably the least likely to happen, but it's tied up in these talks because. There's a lot of interest on both sides of the aisle in DC to try and. Figure out some sort of immigration policy or form to address. What's happening at the southern border. And then finally, we are entering an election year. And. I learned a long time ago not to get into the prediction business, particularly in public and on the record. But I can provide a little bit of insight into what I expect to see. In the House, I can't provide any insight really. With all 435 members up for reelection every two years. You really got to wait till next summer at least to know which party has the upper hand going into it. In the Senate, we know a lot more right now. Senators have six-year terms, their elections are staggered. So only 33 seats are up for reelection in 2024. And the Democratic Party faces a tough road in maintaining their. One, really one-seat majority, they're 51-49. Right now, because of those 33 seats, 23 are currently held by Democrats. Only 10 are held by Republicans. And Republicans don't have to play a lot of defense because the closest to a swing state they hold this cycle are states like Texas and Florida. Democrats, on the other hand, there's three states currently, three seats in states currently held by Democrats where. Former President Trump won in 2020, including West Virginia, Montana. And I'm forgetting, and Ohio. And then there's swing states that could really go either way in places like Arizona, Nevada. And Pennsylvania. So Democrats are going to be playing a lot of defense to try and hold on to their majority and Republicans see a lot of opportunity to try and take back that chamber. It's also a presidential election year. And from what it looks like right now, we're likely heading to a rematch of 2020, and I don't think. You need any more analysis on that. We all lived through it. But yeah, there's some other factors in play, like an independent candidacy that could change things as well as some other. Factors that could impact the presidential election, but it's just way too soon. November, a year is a lifetime in DC. But yeah, it's going to be relatively quiet as apart from the election news. By summer of an election year, a lot of members want to be back in their home state campaigning and solidifying their base. So. Things start to get pretty quiet, but. We will be hitting the ground running here in, in January to try and find some more. Success. And I think that's, I think that's all I have for you. I do just want to reiterate how much of a pleasure it is working. With you and for you and Washington DC and with your team. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Hopefully that's.
Questions?
The question, it's just been a learning curve for me to, to understand the process as you were explaining. When we're awarded these earmarks from going from that point to actually seeing the dollars here. And what the rules are. I was rather surprised. You know, when we found out how the West Main project has to be administered.
Yeah. The good thing is that's pretty much only for transportation projects. The Federal Highways Administration requires, as you know, federal or certified agencies to carry out federal highways projects and. The only ones in Oregon are ODOT and some larger cities and counties. With all the other earmarks, Carlton can deliver the project themselves with the water sewer. With the emergency operation stuff. That's all. The money will come directly to you and you can carry out the project. So.
Now, was that problem unique to Oregon or other states the same way?
That's a good question. I have, we primarily work with Oregon and Washington. It's not something I've heard from them, but I, I don't think I've really asked. I'm not sure if. Just all of our clients, there are certified agencies or it's just, it could be the way ODOT is structured. But I can look and I don't know that for sure.
I would assume that if it's federal and those restrictions are there, that it's got to be probably national.
Yeah, I'm just not sure if, because we represent some smaller communities too. I'm not sure if more of them are certified in Washington. Than in Oregon. I don't know why that would be the case. I guess they, just by their population, they do get more federal formula funding than Oregon, but. Yeah, I don't know that for sure.
We, I appreciate your efforts. We appreciate your efforts on her behalf.
Certainly true there. Anything else? Question? Comment?
So you grew up down the street. You grew up in Carlton?
Yeah. Yep.
Oh, you've seen this town change a lot.
Oh, yeah. Back when I was growing up, I think it was just a video rental store in the deli. And the pool, of course, but yeah, it's all the, yeah, basic rooms and restaurants coming.
It's been interesting.
Well, now, you have four items for the 2024 agenda?
Right now.
Yes, it's a sort of the number that you try to strike for.
That's a great question. Typically, we want to get at least four. The sweet spot is kind of four to six. What we like to do, so with the earmark process, like I mentioned, there's 12 annual spending bills. Each of those spending bills, not each of them, probably eight or nine, have different earmark accounts in them. So there's the Homeland Security Bill that has the Emergency Operations Center account. There's a transportation bill which has the transportation accounts. So what we like to do is get four, five, six projects. In different bills under different accounts, just to try and give you the best chance of success. Because most communities are submitting transportation and water sewer projects. So we like to try and give you the best chance of success by taking advantage of other accounts. But once you get more than six, then it kind of is overkill. And then people are like, why? Just stop.
Well, how many accounts did you say there were?
Well, there's a lot of accounts in terms of what a city is eligible for.
Yeah.
Maybe 10.
Okay, yeah, so sticking. Six is a nice, yeah, it's, it's not greedy.
Yeah.
But it's substantial.
And the reason we always like to have at least. Normally I would tell folks outside of Oregon. Pick one water or sewer project. But Oregon's in a unique position in that Senator Merkley is the chairman of the Interior Appropriations Subcommittee. So the Interior Bill. Covers EPA, which covers the water sewer account. So he. And he's in charge of that committee that writes that bill and has now sized influence in what projects get included. So we like to put forward both the water and sewer requests there.
So are there accounts available, say like for the. Schools in town? Or school?
There are some, yeah. And there's grant programs as well. So yeah, if you have. Ideas or want to put me in content, I'm happy to give them advice within obviously our existing scope. There's a lot of new grant programs created for schools. And existing programs, the earmark accounts, I think there's a few. But there, all of them have very strict eligibility requirements in terms of what you can use the funding for. So I'm not sure. I can't remember if it's like, if there's like a school safety one or. I know there's grant programs out there for things like electrifying school buses and things like that. But it's typically not necessarily, you can just, if you're a school, you can use the funding for whatever you want. It has to meet those eligibility parameters.
So I know this was a federal agenda update. Is CFM working at the state level?
Not for Carlton. We do have a state lobby team, but. We just do federal.
What is success rate, like? State versus federal? Which one you have more success in general?
That's a good question. I'm trying to think. So I started out with our state lobby team, but back then. We didn't represent a lot of municipalities. I worked with a lot of nonprofits and transit agencies. I know, working with them recently, they can oftentimes get higher dollar amounts. Just because the earmark process, earmarks typically range from $1 to $3 million. You can go outside of that rarely. There's grant programs at the federal level, but where you can get higher dollar amounts, but usually that's reserved for larger cities and projects like. Projects on I-5 and stuff, you could get $50 million, but. Kind of the reality of Carlton, your projects don't rise to the scope of a lot of federal grant programs, just in terms of sheer size. So the earmark is really where you're best suited. At the state level. They could get you a $10 million. I, I can't guarantee that, but it's, it's eligible. And it's not unlikely. The difference is, at least what I've heard from them recently. It really has to be in a long session. The short session coming up, they're pretty much saying no funding is really available, but the state. Is a really good resource, particularly for small communities, because your legislator, it's a lot more. I don't want to say it's easier, but it's more direct, right? Your legislator can. Include your project directly in the bill. At the federal level, your legislators have to submit their projects to the Appropriations Committee, who then decide which of these projects get in and then. It's out of their hands. Really, but your members can more directly advocate for those projects. So definitely something I'd recommend with your legislators to, your state legislators to keep them in loop and. Ask them for money. That's there, not in short sessions typically, but.
Seeing the success in.
Oh, yeah, so that, I don't have their numbers.
Yeah.
I like to think we're better. I don't know if that's true.
So would you recommend Carlton to also try the state?
I would recommend you speak with them. They'll be a better. And they'll tell you straight up whether they think it's worth it or not, particularly entering a short session. They might tell you to wait. Until later next year, just because they're probably not going to be too optimistic they'll be able to get you anything, but I don't want to speak for them. They may feel differently. But yes, definitely, we're talking to them. And seeing what they think, because they're the experts.
We are keeping in touch with them, yes.
Oh, good.
Any other questions? Comments? Michael, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I'll see you later.
Yeah. Busy here. The early meetings, I don't mind over in DC. I get to sleep in still. Alright, thanks.
Appreciate your time. Thank you. Alrighty. Immunity Room Discussion continued.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Council, we took your feedback from the last meeting and we started a draft. Policy outline and application, and I cannot say the word draft enough. This is all subject change. We just started with. The model that we're designing. I'd find some with your feedback. And we will continue to evolve this as we proceed to these discussions. So again, I cannot say draft enough.
Is this a draft?
Well, we're kind of attached to it. Yeah, it's very much a draft. So one of the discussions that I have heard throughout the development of community rooms. And one that I think might take some time. So we wanted to start that now. Is whether or not. Council wanted to consider allowing alcohol use in the community room for certain events. You probably remember seeing the policies that from other organizations that we provided last time, that they did have allowances for that. There were extra fees involved. There's extra requirements. There's a lot that goes into it, just like anybody who would want to use alcohol. At the city park or anything else. And so we wanted to start that discussion.
I would think that depending on what types of. Events we're looking at holding there. I think we went through this last time, is it? Saying no alcohol in the building would be. Pretty awkward.
Sure, and we were a wine fellow. It can be really strange.
There is that too, yeah.
But if that's allowed, how much, how many hours then? Is staff going to have to deal with? Directing daily, who gets the OLCC permit, license, stuff and all of that that's involved?
Amy, do you want to review how we handle for, obviously, outside city buildings right now?
Right.
So it's a, it's a two-step process. So they fill out their form. It's an oil fee. Usually it's like a special event to. A, a alcohol suppliers, just say Carlton owners, they already have their permit. So it would be a special event in their license on a different occasion, essentially. They fill out the form. It is, comes to the city. There's a nominal fee. $35 around that window. It gets reviewed by the city and then once the city approves it, it goes to OLCC and they actually issue, do another review and then issue the. Special event permit. They also have parameters of. Security plan in place. They have to provide that. They have to have, show the hours. They have to have servers that have OLCC approved serving licenses. So they also have additional measures that they have to meet. If we do have alcohol in the building, they will have to have. Definitely have to have one of the group permits through OLCC to have it.
But they're, they're the ones that are responsible for providing all of the. All of the servers, all of the, all of the monitoring. So basically, you. Go through the permit, the first permit and then.
Right, and it, and it falls on the person's or the business's license. If they don't meet those criteria, it's their license to lose. They, they, they want to meet their criteria that OLCC has in place.
So it's not just. Somebody wants to have for unknown reason a. Birthday party with alcohol or a wedding reception with alcohol. They can't go through all of that?
They can. It, it's a lot. Trickier. I mean, they have to find a vendor. They have to find somebody with the license willing to come serve them. And go through the OLCC.
Okay, so you have to have an approved vendor.
They have to have an OLCC license that is. Current valid.
Okay.
And legal to serve.
For any kind of an event that involves alcohol.
Yes. We wouldn't want any event in there that did not have OLCC approved.
Yeah, but I mean, like, oh, I wanted to have a party for my cat, so you know.
I brought a couple beers, yeah.
Yeah.
That would, we'd want, we'd want to make sure they have the correct permitting in place.
Okay.
And then with something like that happens, we've never done it inside the building. That. Entity that wants to do it. What then does a city require of them as far as insurance, damage, those type of?
Great question. That's why we're coming to you. So they would have. A certificate of insurance that would name the city that would cover up to a certain amount of monies, but. We're using this application for any additional parameters. That we want to apply to the situation, whether it's keeping it out of. Only in the community room, not in the hallway spaces. If we want to have food, it have to be required when they're serving alcohol. What times are we allowed to serve alcohol? So there's all kinds of other things that we can also instill. To keep. Better protect our space, but yet still allow them to use.
Exceeds so many attendees, security. A security person there.
If you have alcohol, you are required to have security.
Do we know what the? The room population is yet?
It varies based upon the setup.
Well. Yeah.
Can you, can you, this is the test. Can anybody quote what I said last meeting?
No.
Seventy something.
I think it's larger interest.
Yeah, I think it's.
I thought you said 200. As a whole room, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Well, then don't trust me.
You're not the fire marshal.
Correct.
Can you give me a minute to go look that up?
And it sounds like it's a good thing he's not.
Please continue the discussion while I go find.
Isn't OLCC, Amy, don't, don't they?
Isn't OLCC, Amy, don't, don't they um, govern that the food with alcohol thing as well?
They do.
Right.
But at the same time. They don't have somebody on site, so if we're going to have alcohol being served, we can require security, so if they have. And then we could work fire depending on how many people, so larger groups, they need more security, and that can be part of this required security plan that. Additional food is supplied, because the OLCC requirements, they require, but it doesn't mean that one person can't stand right there and eat. Ninety percent of it, and there's still fifty people that.
Right.
So making sure that there's rations for everybody.
How does, how does the um. The event center over in Newburgh handle this, because the.
The cultural center.
The cultural center, yeah, yeah, how do they, I mean, I I'm assuming you guys did some research as you were working through this, I just wondered if that was one that you checked into or?
They do, they do have additional fees, they're, they have a higher deposit. Um, than, for example, maybe. Like the Leslie Lewis Pavilion, it's a little bit nicer newer event space, um, so their deposit is much higher um, to cover incidentals. Uh, but they also have the same, very similar alcohol consumption requirements, you have to have security, you have to have additional food, you have to have. Uh, strict time, place, locations of alcohol consumption, can't be outside the building, can't have it in the hallways.
And they don't have, I mean, they don't have other hired folks to come in and kind of be monitoring their, the group is expected to kind of take care of that.
For the most part, they do have. Uh, they do have staff in the cultural center, um.
Yeah.
I don't know that it's very. Highly staffed, there probably one or two, an event coordinator on staff that would be there.
Yeah.
But for the most part.
And that would be probably, I would assume we'd want to do that anyways, have one, at least one person from the city there, keeping an eye on things, or do we?
That's a great question, so if we do.
Yeah, that's staff.
For that, um, and then if our police department gets called in, the rally, whatever, there's going to have to be a charge for that. Um, anything that is not per plan or if a staff has to come in when they're not expected to, we would have to charge for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um. We want to make sure that their event is completely. Operational from good to good to go, so that we necessarily wouldn't have to have a staff member there, unless there's some type of emergency need, and if that's the case, they would. They would be. Invoiced. Yes, so Tyler's fired as far as room. That's a code maximum is a hundred and fifty four for the north section and seventy five for the south, the other two hundred and twenty nine.
My numbers would not violate fire code.
If it was Price is Right rules, you win. Um, rough estimates for the scenarios, you can see down below with the partition open, a council meeting, council tables and a presenter forty to fifty seats, so about sixty people. Um, he said a fair, so like a craft fair with sixteen tables around the north, east, south edges. Eighty to ninety people standing, walking from table to table are about a hundred people. And a presentation type setup with a speaker up front and seats about seventy to eighty, and then you have the options with the partition closed. For your breath.
There's going to be a quiz document next month.
Um, I just, and I don't want to get into the weeds on this, I just have a quick question on the um, number five of the deposit refund. I can see that mean a problem. Meaning. Most wines are red, so like. It was that just a suggestion for like spills and things like that, was that something that we took out of somebody else's recommendations?
That is actually purely out of with the.
The community center?
Uh, some of their like nursery rooms and stuff.
I, that was just a point.
White wine omen.
White wine omen.
That could be awkward.
Yeah, who defines red?
I don't have an issue with it, I think um, we have the, we're all kind of thinking on the same page, I believe, and have the regulations in place.
Yeah.
It would be interesting to see, like, how do we come to a number on a security deposit, you know what I mean, like. Some, a group of five people wants to do it, you know what I mean, it's slightly different than a group of thirty people, you know what I mean, a business is probably more capable of the. Granted, you're going to get your security deposit back, but I don't know what the typical numbers for that is, but.
Bankway compared to a business.
Right, yeah, like a CBA meeting versus a.
Yeah.
A banquet, you know.
I'm curious.
Don't have any suggestions, I'm just saying, right?
About the uh, entry hall, it's listed on page one forty one, do you envision? People having a function in the in between building area or?
It would be something in addition to the community room, so it does, the community room has those big doors that open up, and so it can be kind of a. Lobby reading space, or maybe you'd rather have your food out there and use the whole room for your speaking event or something. So it just gives a little bit more.
In addition, but probably not just rent it for your event.
Exactly, that that would be. But you could have the red wine.
I think that, I like that, because I do think the way the design was set up, it's kind of a welcoming space, there's going to be historical things, I could see people meandering. You know what I mean, checking out.
Going out and looking around, yeah, especially the first few times.
Yeah, I like it, besides the DVDs on fees, I obviously. What?
Yeah, we we didn't want to put anything in there, we did originally, so they can um. Have some information from other cities, but we want to make sure we're providing as close to actual.
Yeah, no, that's my biggest thing, is making sure we're doing that, but also making sure that we're being fair to the community, and that's why. My mind on the security deposit and things, I don't want to like prohibit people, like, gosh, I gotta pay a thousand dollar security deposit, you know what I mean, like.
Yeah.
Use this for two hours, you know, things like that come to my mind, is I want to encourage people to use the space.
David, you don't have any copies of this, I'm sorry, um, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no, I do not, um, it sounds pretty well uh, covered to me, um. So, yeah, I I, I feel like uh, we're heading in the right direction discussing this at this point in time.
Just wanted to check in with you.
Thank you.
Very general positive of moving forward with developing some policies around us. Um, did I, am I hearing currently that you'd like to explore the concept of security for at least a certain number of people? You have an event of over fifty people.
Mean alcohol or whether it's alcohol or not, yeah. It depends what the event is.
Yeah, I mean, like if you have a craft fair, I don't think it's security, you know what I mean, but like, yeah.
But if there's alcohol involved.
Right, if there's alcohol.
Yeah, definitely in a certain number, but I mean, but if you were like having a meet, I mean, I could envision like a company might want to have a. You know, some kind of retreat meeting where there's seventy five people, but they're not going to have alcohol, I don't think security.
No, I was specifically asking related to the alcohol.
Oh, yeah.
Would the OLTC require that, is that right?
They require monitors, um, security would be kind of like another level. You would have, you could have some security outfits that even administer breath lizers for anybody that they feel could be. You know, so they they, they're additional security to the ones that the volunteers are required to have. So it could be a hired security company that you could require, um, if they're only going to have volunteers, it might be something third party. There are security outfits that can help with that, um, that would be an option. As opposed to the volunteer based.
I'd like to get an idea, or maybe you could check out like sort of what the norm is for, uh, you know, security per. Attendees, like, you know, one officer or one hired security firm per one hundred people, or is it seventy five people or a hundred and fifty people?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. If you go up to two hundred people, then you need to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I keep thinking back on on the, I I guess my. Best comparison is the the Newburgh Cultural Center, and they seem to have it handled pretty well. If there's, if they've got monitors around there, you don't really know. So, they seem to be.
If alcohol is served, are you interested in requiring food, at least some sort of?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I actually think that's a requirement anyway. At least in restaurants it is, or bars, you have to have food.
Hmm.
Um, did you want to explore any time limits or other use restrictions?
I think it's setting their eleven PM, right? An issue is that?
Seven to eleven? Is that what you said?
Uh, what do you mean by seven to eleven, seven AM?
I thought that's.
Oh, no, sorry.
Yeah, seven AM.
Or just shut down by eleven.
Mimosa's Bloody Marys, yeah.
Yeah, I would say the time level would be on the, on the evening, and as far as time duration, I don't.
Do you want to explore that, is that something that's important to you?
Duration.
I mean, until then, somebody, you know, New Year's party, you gotta go home at eleven?
Who wants seven years?
Well, I'm I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure it's no different than the Legion Hall or the Community Center, they probably have.
Yeah, they've had some issues there at that Legion Hall.
But I mean, I'm sure there's a limit.
Some issues, oh, yeah, they have.
I would, you know, the only, the only time I can see where they, somebody would want to be past eleven o'clock would be New Year's.
The only time?
Well, to me, I, yeah, I don't get out much.
Well, it was all of our policies, if there's a standard, there could be a.
An option.
An option to ask for an exception.
Mm-hmm, I think the, the. The BA building there is uh, eleven o'clock.
The Legion Hall?
Well, that kind of goes with our quiet town setting, you know, we need to go home, go to bed.
Yeah.
Do we have a start time, do we have an end no later than eleven, but like we start at eight, eight, eight AM or something like that? Do we have something, or it's just for us to decide?
Right now, it's up for discussion, even if you want to set a time, uh, you could just say, no, you know, everybody has to be out of the building by eleven.
Yeah, I, start times tend to be kind of, yeah.
I think it would be good to have a start time set, because if we don't have it, someone's going to come in here and say, I want to start my party at twelve oh one.
Well, I. Maybe say no earlier than five o'clock.
No, but you have to talk about the entire day for, you know, generally speaking, say, you know, seven in the morning.
And then aren't they renting the place per hour?
Yeah, renting the place per hour.
Yeah, and if it's a craft show, you'd want to start early.
Right, so I'm talking, envisioning things that happen earlier in the day.
We're just talking about alcohol use.
Yeah.
Oh, we are?
No, we're talking about alcohol use.
Five AM.
Um, another thing that comes to mind, are we uh. Are we allowing the use of that during normal business hours?
Use of alcohol?
No, well, all of the above.
Rooms.
You know, the room, I'm just wondering, does the staff feel like that's going to, that could be a disruption to normal business flow? You know, do we, do we look at a five thirty PM to eleven PM and Saturday and Sunday, or I'm just throwing it out there?
Yeah.
It certainly could be disruptive to uh, business, depending on the use that's there, if it's a. Uh, under five birthday party that, or band practice.
Yeah.
That could certainly be disruptive.
But I mean, but the whole point of that community room is during the week and during business hours is to allow meetings to occur there. To uh, allow a, you know, a knitting circle, a yoga class, whatever, those are all during the day.
Yeah, but they have to be cognizant, they're in a, a working facility.
Well, that's why I'm just wondering, like, if we just don't say anything that I was just talking about, and we can evaluate it on the application, if somebody says we want to bring in seventy five people. At eleven AM on Monday, we have the right to say, I ain't going to work.
Yeah.
Depends on what they're going to do.
Can we look at on a case by case basis of what it is?
We need parameters, though. We can't just leave it. So my advice is we shouldn't just. Yeah, I think it would be very restrictive to say you can't do it during business hours, because then the lunch meeting for the business, you know what I mean, or whatever, then. They're, they're not going to be able to use that space, but I don't.
We can certainly look at some recommendations for parameters for room use and types of uses, uh, we can look at that, we will work with Tyler for some recommended language. Um, today, yes, my question was just solely focused on alcohol.
They can drink, but they have to have a permit.
But after twelve oh one is what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Twelve oh one to eleven.
Seems fair.
PM, twelve oh one PM.
If somebody wants to start. We've got a lot of problems. I don't think so.
Why would you say twelve oh one versus twelve? Well, she didn't say twelve oh one, because I said twelve oh one.
Yeah.
I was not helpful.
Pay attention, Tyler.
I don't even know how many people will be in this room.
That's right, two hundred.
Again, regarding alcohol, are there any things that pop into your head about additional fees or charges surrounding alcohol use in the room? Surrounding alcohol use in the room. That pop into your head right now?
We covered it.
I think we covered it.
Your security deposit.
Security, insurance.
Insurance, cleaning.
OLCC permit, all of that.
Now, the food part, if we're going to require food, is the food, are they showing up to cook in the kitchen, or is it catered?
The kitchen's not likely to have a lot of cooking space, it's um, it's a small space, and so if they're going to have a large group. They're most likely going to have it catered, but they could bring the items in, set it in the kitchen, and use the facility for like to keep it warm.
Right.
Until they're ready to serve.
Yeah, it's more of a prep kitchen.
Thank you.
Last minute, yeah.
And maybe that just needs to be clarified.
Told to them, yeah, we're not cooking.
We can certainly add that to the definition of what the kitchen. Yeah. Anything else surrounding alcohol?
You didn't bring any.
I guess, I'll look again at what you showed us last month with the other people, what do, what do they do?
Okay, we'll work on crafting.
You, you know, I do. I I do have an idea that uh. Yeah. Kind of based off of another thing that happened in town, but uh, if people uh, behave poorly, is there a. With or without alcohol, um, if people have poor behavior, are we going to have a mechanism to uh. I blacklist them or some things, um, take away their right to rent that uh, space if they uh, have any poor behavior.
We can certainly look at what other facilities have done and certainly work with our city attorney for some parameters around that.
I I think it would be wise to, to protect ourselves, um. And and. I hold people accountable. I hold people accountable for, for uh behavior that, that's runs counter to our, our. Great little town, but that's just my thought.
Thank you, counselor.
I have one. Let's say a winery wants to rent the location every week on Saturday afternoon. Are we allowing that, like? Like a reserve recurring spot every single week?
For tasting.
Yeah. It's like you have a tasting room there.
Not specifically stated as re- reoccurring. Uh and we certainly can visit if you wanted a different fee structure for reoccurring. Right now, what we've seen and what I've experienced in the past at other cities. Is that if you want a reoccurring meeting or a reoccurring event like you're stating. You're certainly welcome to do it, but you have to pay the same fees each time you do.
If you want to book it every Saturday in New Edinburgh. Say, when the price turns out to be three hundred dollars for the time that you book it the first day. It's three hundred dollars the second Saturday and it's three hundred the third Saturday and three hundred the fourth Saturday.
But could you limit, like, could someone book the whole year? Or sometimes, how could you limit to maybe a month and a half? Whatever.
Yes, that's a good discussion for us to have in the future.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we do need to make decisions about that, because we don't want somebody to bogart, you know, every Saturday for a year.
Yeah. Yeah, but I think we're hoping it's gonna be more human element rather than a business additional room.
I guess a follow-up question, are you, are you talking about the scenario of them selling? Like, in your hypothetical scenario, are you like talking about somebody renting that to sell, to use as their business?
Use it as a pacing room?
Yeah, you know what I mean, like, is there ways, you know? To do that in a different way of saying, no commercial sale, you know what I mean, outside of like a craft fair or something like that where people. Are exchanging money, but maybe there's an avenue for that, like you can't.
Well, usually craft fairs are gonna be kind of nonprofit too, there's some, somewhere along the line, whoever does the fair is getting some money.
I was thinking to like, maybe, I, I would, I would say maybe like a pop-up restaurant. Would maybe when I use that type of space and I, I think that's fine, I, I, I think the problem is if it's a reoccurring thing. If it's like every single week, the time that they are booked essentially. Um I think we should limit on that, but I think every once in a while, I think, I don't see the problem. If you want people to use it, not only one business essentially, one, yeah.
So you would like to see some sort of policy that discourages the ability to reserve the room solely, primarily for one primary organization?
For, well, for commercial, is it?
That's the whole point of it.
I mean, if you're not for profit or you're gonna religiously, you probably don't want to see that as well, right? And I guess my point is, doesn't really matter if it's commercial or not, but I think we don't want to see the same thing over and over.
You don't want the same time slot always.
Yeah.
No, I think that's a good point, I mean. Yeah.
Have we, in terms of fees? Many of these other locations you looked at, like have a sliding scale of fees depending on the day of the week and the time of the day?
No, the sliding scale really is for residency versus non-residency or nonprofit, or it's not for time of day or day week. Okay, I think we've got plenty to bring back next month. Would you stop that?
Yes, it will be. Are you done? Are we done with that? So you're ready for the main street?
Okay.
Item. My name.
N M C for the Carlton Workforce Sidewalk Project. Um, as you are well aware, we have been trying to launch this program for quite some. And. I have. I have worked with. Numerous people. And our team to find. A way to salvage the intent of the program. With the recognition that. We're having a lot of difficulty making this program as originally outlined. We're just having trouble matching uh a contractor who's willing to work with you. Getting you on board, it's part of a lot of coordination with donations. In the homeowners. And so I am here. To suggest that we change it to, from the workforce sidewalk program. To the Carlton Walkability Sidewalk Program and difference is, is we're not focused on the. And that has been a challenge. Um and it's not to rule out the opportunity in the future. But it's to move us forward, because right now we're just on pause, you pay for enough. And so we have thought we could incorporate many aspects of the original intent. We could uh open up an application program for homeowners to apply for the program. Uh we would ask applicants to pay for the cost of the concrete. The city would pay for the A D A ramps, which are very important for accessibility throughout town. Um that would also help reduce the cost of the entire project. For them, we could retain the waiver of permit fees for property owners. Uh we can apply for grants to supplement city funds for this. And when we're successful, we thought we could open it up for applicants. Who, the cost of concrete will still be too much for them, and we'll open it up at that time. It.
It's not the concrete, it's the pouring and laying, and that's. So when you're talking about concrete, you're talking about the whole. Putting in the concrete, paying for the work to put it in.
You're talking about the base, the, the concrete, the, everything that goes into laying the sidewalks.
Yeah, the rock forming, and then.
The.
disposal.
Yeah. Uh this year, if you approve this uh modification to the program. There are a couple homeowners who have been excited about working with us for the last couple of years that I would like to invite to participate. As uh the first one since they've been waiting for this project to get launched. Um and they've been very cooperative.
We need to do something, and I'd like this recommendation, because. It's been going on for too long, which I appreciate the efforts, but I think it's time to maneuver. I like it. Sidewalks are terrible.
Especially on East Main Street, and I want to really thank my team, um and people I've been working with, uh because. It really pains me not to bring the original intent of the project with the youth and workforce. And we really tried to find a way, because we knew we put this expectation out into the community. So how did we move forward while trying to meet as close to that expectation as possible?
Yeah, and it's a shame, and it would have been great, but we're unfortunately faced with the reality that people are busy and trying, you know.
Are we okay moving forward?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, we just, we beat our heads against the wall too many times almost.
Thank you, we have our merchant orders.
And they'll be done with the purchase of the air, the concrete falling out.
Yeah.
They can work Saturday.
Okay, is there anything else? Good to the order? Comments?
Just for informational purposes, I am working on just the strategies for our goal setting on January 14th, so. Uh we have an interview schedule at the end of the week, so just expect that that process will restart, we probably remember it from last year.
Okay.
Last year, we have to go outside of our city hall.
Yes.
Do we have a motion? You could at least let me finish. All in favor?
Alright.